Welcome to the July 8th meeting of the Board of Supervisors. We will begin with the invocation and flag salute. The invocation will be led by District Four, and after the invocation, please remain standing for the flag salute which our Reverend will give start.
Mr. Chairman.
What's that?
Let me take real call, real quick.
Here.
Okay, sorry about that. Supervisor Bredefield.
Here.
Supervisor Chavez.
Here.
Supervisor Magzig.
Here.
Supervisor Pacheco.
Here.
Chairman Mendez.
Here.
All present, thank you.
Okay, we'll have the invocations, so please stand up.
Let's pray. Dear Lord, we come to you in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ. Give us a heart that hates what you hate and loves what you love. Let us desire to be holy, for you are holy. Let us hunger and thirst for your word. Let your word be the light unto our path, and let your word be that which forms our decisions, our actions, and our life. Father, we thank you for another day that was not promised to us. We thank you, Lord, that your mercy is made new every day. Lord, I plead that you help us to be a people who our highest aim in life is to have communion with you, to know the God who created the heavens and the earth, the one who placed each star into the sky. Not a plant grows or a leaf falls unless you commanded it to. You are the sovereign God who is in total control, and so, Lord, I ask that you touch each one of our hearts, and you give us peace and love and gentleness, and help us to get back to our roots, that we are one nation under God. We thank you, and we ask this in Jesus' name.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you Reverend Jacob, thank you very much for coming today.
Item number one, approve agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Did you get that?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, all in favor.
Well, I was.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I think they're all under consent, okay. I was gonna give you where I'm gonna need to recuse.
Yeah, well, that's next.
Okay, got it.
No problem.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor, am I saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Now we'll move to consent items.
Approve consent agenda, item numbers twenty-four through fifty-five.
Okay, does anybody need to take any off consent?
Yes.
Yeah.
I do need to recuse myself on, actually, items, oh, I'll say that later, twelve and forty-four on consent, and I would like to pull item twenty-nine point one and item thirty for discussion.
Okay.
And I, I'll need to abstain on item forty-four and item twelve as well for fourteen thirty-nine, which is the Levine Act, and then item thirty-four, I know one of the names that was listed on there, person of interest was a Parnagian, I don't know if we got clarity on that, so I'm gonna need to pull item thirty-four because I have received contributions from both Dennis and Leland Parnagian.
My recusal for the same reason that he mentioned, donations.
And I too, Mr. Chairman, under SB fourteen thirty-nine, I need to recuse myself from general item number twelve and consent item number forty-four.
Okay, thank you.
So I wanna make sure I've got this right. We've got Mag- Supervisor Magzig, Supervisor Bredefield, Supervisor Pacheco, who are recusing themselves due to the Levine Act on items twelve and forty-four, and Supervisor Magzig, you are on thirty-four as well. Thank you. And we've pulled Supervisor Bredefield, pulled item twenty-nine point one and thirty. Thank you.
And me and Luis have none.
We don't have rights.
Yeah. Okay, so, does anybody in the public wanna pull anything off consent? Hearing none?
Item twenty-five.
Twenty-five. Yeah, okay, I'll close it, we'll.
All right, I will make a motion to approve the remainder, and again, the items that have been pulled are twenty-five, thirty, twenty-nine point one, forty-four, twelve, and thirty-four.
Okay.
Second.
Second, okay, all in favor, am I saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Do you wanna?
If you'd like, we could discuss all the items pulled from consent after item six, if that works for you, after all the.
Okay, that's fine, that's good.
Okay. So we will now move to item number three, under Chairman Mendez, proclaim July seventh through the eleventh, twenty twenty-five, as eligibility workers, job specialists, and appeals specialist appreciation week in the county of Fresno.
Okay. Ollie here, or?
Yes.
Okay, you're on. And why don't you introduce who's ever with you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. With me here, I have Terica, I have Deputy Director Hernandez, I have Stephanie Oakley, come on guys, we're a little shy, sir, and I also have our jobs appeal specialist and my commission Deputy Director Hernandez. Okay, so, thank you for the opportunity today to celebrate this crucial groups that we have here. We have our eligibility workers, our job specialists, and our appeal specialists. Together, this group of people serve an essential part and the pillar of our community. So, like I said, one of the things that our amazing staff here embody is that our community meant excellence and compassionate interaction, serving as a resource and a voice and a vital information source to every family and individual seeking help. With an enduring willingness to serve, our staff are on the front lines connecting our community members to vital services and safety net. So let me briefly highlight what incredible work that they do. Our eligibility workers are the gateway to essential federal and state programs. They determine access to necessities like food that prevent hunger, life-saving medical care through medical insurance, and crucial housing and shelter to families in greatest need through our varying housing support programs. Our job specialists play a vital role in helping our clients overcome barriers to employment, providing case management and support services that empower them to overcome barriers and achieve self-sufficiency through job training and educational programs. Our appeal specialists are our guidance of justice, ensuring fairness and accuracy by resolving benefits disputes, timeliness, and accuracy through case reviews, and they play a crucial role in ensuring accountability, ensuring just outcomes for those seeking eligible support. Looking back at the past year, the combined scale of their work is impactful to our community in a positive manner. Our staff handled over three hundred thousand phone calls, each one unique, requesting help, a question to answer, or a crisis moment that requires empathy and guidance. Our team has reimbursed seventy thousand EBT TAF claims, returning over five million back to stolen benefits to those in need. They processed more than forty-six hundred hearing requests, fulfilled over thirty-one thousand requests for emergency shelter, preventing nights of sleeping on the streets for our vulnerable population. Furthermore, they assisted more than fourteen hundred adults in eliminating barriers to actively seeking work towards self-sufficiency. With their help, over two hundred thousand Fresno County residents would face hunger, many families would not have a safe place to live, and half of our citizens would lack access to medical care. In combination, the group that you see here ensure that the people of Fresno and Fresno County have access to health care, housing, food, but more importantly, are self-sufficient. Thank you.
Anybody else wanna speak, or you got it? That was short, I liked that.
That was the goal.
Okay, is there any public comment on this resolution before I bring it back to the board? Can I bring it back to the board? Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve?
One second.
Okay, thank you. All in favor, am I saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries, please come up.
You did a good job.
project first steps twentieth anniversary in providing legal, free legal representation to domestic violence survivors in the county of Fresno.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Clerk. Do we have Sean Juice in here today from CCLS? Thank you guys for the work that you guys have been doing. We have a proclamation for you folks today, and I know that you guys have had this program now for about twenty years, but I'll let you say a little bit about the work you do, and more than anything, just thank you for providing that valuable service to our domestic violence victims in Fresno County.
Thank you. I'm Sean Juice, I'm the pro bono director at Central California Legal Services, and I have with me today three of our dedicated colleagues for Project First Step from Central La Familia, Martine Rodriguez Jr., Chin Bang, and Kendy Villa, without whom this project would not have seen twenty years of success. I wanna thank you all for your recognition of the project. As we celebrate its twentieth anniversary, through Project First Step, we provide free pro bono legal representation to survivors of domestic violence in court seeking their permanent restraining orders. Supervisor Magzig, you were then mayor of Clovis, and you endorsed the launch of the project, so I wanted to thank you for your early support, and Supervisor Chavez, we greatly appreciate your leading the resolution this morning to recognize us. Twenty years ago, a committee that was spearheaded by the Fresno County Women Lawyers was determined to provide legal representation to domestic violence survivors, taking their first steps to create a safer life for themselves and for their children. Today, the partners in Project First Step are Central La Familia, CCLS, the Marjorie Mason Center, the Fresno County Women Lawyers, the Fresno County Bar Association's Pro Bono Services Committee, and the California Monge Advocates Network. So this collaborative project is what strengthens the entire, the entire project and allows us to continue to move forward over twenty years. It's bringing in the private bar, our domestic violence crisis centers, and the legal community to, to bring this project forward. Of the ten largest counties in California, as I'm sure you know, Fresno County has the highest per capita rate of domestic violence calls to law enforcement, according to the California Department of Justice. So unfortunately, the continuing need for the project is clear, and with the assistance of our partners at the Domestic Violence Crisis Centers and Support Centers, our CCLS Family Law Advocates, and our pro bono attorney panelists, we're able to provide critical representation in court for these survivors. Knowing someone is standing up for them and by them at their side in court makes all the difference to these survivors. Not only are they more likely to have a positive outcome in their legal case because they're having legal representation, but studies have shown that over the long term, when domestic violence survivors have a lawyer at their side, they are less likely in the future to suffer additional abuse, their families are more likely to have economic security, and they have an overall improved sense of well-being and safety as they go forward in life. The enduring success of the pro bono legal project is a testament to the vision and the determination of its founders, the passion of our community partners in the domestic violence realm, and the commitment of the private bar to pro bono services. This Fresno County collaboration demonstrates the power of our community of Fresno County, and we should all be justly proud of our work. We're celebrating the twentieth anniversary of Project First Step next Thursday, the seventeenth, with an event downtown Fresno at the Rose to celebrate three outstanding pro bono panelists who have taken several cases and to represent clients using, donating their own time and talent. We're gonna be recognizing Harry Drandell, Shannon Wentworth, and Kerry Hayden, three Fresno County lawyers who have gone above and beyond in their service to the project, and I would love to invite all of you to, to join us at that event. And I wanna close with a quote from one of our pro bono panelists, Anita Martin. She said that domestic violence survivors are warriors within themselves, and helping them to better place is time well spent on their road to recovery. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the public that wants to speak on this item? Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the board.
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chair.
One second.
Second. All in favor, am I saying aye?
Aye.
The motion is approved, so please come up and take a pick.
to the twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five, as pretrial probation parole supervision week in the county of Fresno.
Okay, Supervisor Magzig.
Yes, we have, of course, Kirk Haynes, our probation chief here, and I cannot say enough positive things about our probation department, they're involved with so many different things. And here to tell us a little bit more about this proclamation is, of course, our illustrious chief, Kirk Haynes.
Thank you Supervisor Magzig, and thank you to the board and to Chairman Mendez, the opportunity for us to present to you this morning. All right, they're all filing in now, so I got my crew here, so I wanna make sure we get everybody in. Come on in. Yeah, we were told no limit on how many, so we brought a lot of people today. Come on in. And then Chairman Mendez, I've got a twenty-minute speech and then another fifteen-minute slide deck, so, I know you like it short, but, no, we're gonna keep it short. But good morning to Chairman Mendez and the board. Kirk Haynes, your chief probation officer for Fresno County. I'd like to extend my sincere thanks to Supervisor Magzig for sponsoring this year's proclamation. You've been a really committed partner to the work that we've done in our department, both in the JJC and out into the field services as well, so I just wanna say thank you for that. Today, we're here to celebrate National Pretrial Probation and Parole Supervision Week. Observe this year, from July twentieth to the twenty-sixth, this year's theme is heroes behind the mission, transforming lives, and enhancing public safety. This resonates deeply with the values of our department and the commitment that's shared across our department as well. Behind every act of safety and restoration in Fresno County stands an unsung hero, dedicated professionals whose daily efforts shape not only the future of individuals, but the resilience of our community as well. Today, I'd like to highlight just a few of the many examples of heroism taking place each and every day. First, I'd like to start with our probation officers, men and women who serve on the front lines of public safety with skill, courage, and integrity. Just last week, our officers partnered with the Fresno County Sheriff's Office to assist in the apprehension of two suspects who were wanted in a violent armed home invasion robbery. They acted swiftly, our probation team provided critical intel and field support, helping to bring the suspects to justice and to restore peace of mind to the affected families. It was a moment that reminds, reminds us all that probation isn't just about supervision, but it's also about being proactive and life-saving engagement. Our juvenile correctional officers, they embody the spirit of transformation. Within our new secure youth treatment facility, which is that facility that holds youth up to age twenty-five, our officers work not only as keepers of order, but also as mentors, motivators, and counselors. Today, I'm proud to share that two of these youth who recently graduated from Fresno City College are now pursuing their bachelor's degrees, one in custody and one who is out in the, in the community being supervised. These young people represent what happens when encouragement meets achievement and when accountability is paired with opportunity. Behind their success are JCOs who never give up on the belief that these young people are capable of greatness. And then finally, our victim witness advocates. I wanna acknowledge them today, who are, that their quiet behind scenes strength offers a lifeline to those who are navigating pain, fear, and the complexities of the justice system. Since twenty nineteen, our department has partnered with the Fresno Police Department's Sexual Assault Cold Case Unit, and in a recent case, our advocate worked side by side with investigators to ensure that victims whose traumas dated back to years was not only heard, but they were truly supported. Their presence in these moments reminds us, safety isn't just measured by arrests, it's felt in the way survivors reclaim their stories. In closing, I ask you to join me in saluting these extraordinary public servants that are here behind me today. They are the heroes behind the mission, empowering change, and they are safeguarding our county and lifting the voices of those who are too often go unheard. Each year, I try to remind myself of this week, and, and let it be more than just a commemoration, but to call to sustain the vital work of the folks who are behind me to transfer lives each and every day in Fresno County. So again, I wanna say thank you Supervisor Magzig, and to the board for the opportunity for us to be able to present to you today, the officers and the staff of the Fresno County Probation Department, who really go above and beyond, and I couldn't be prouder to be their chief. So with that, I'm available for any other questions.
Okay, I got one question, Chief.
Yes, sir.
How many adults are you supervising on parole right now?
Well, on probation, we've got two sets of probation, we've got about ten thousand probationers that are under some, some form of adult supervision.
Yeah.
And so, remember, with AB one oh nine realignment, those, those folks who would have normally gone to parole now come to us, about half of those who went to parole now come to us under supervision as a result of AB one oh nine realignment about fifteen years ago. So our plates are very full.
Yeah, you guys got a huge job.
Absolutely, absolutely, and they do an outstanding job, both probation officers, probation technicians, staff, you know, office support, you know, we couldn't do this without all of those folks, you know, carrying their, their weight.
Okay, is there any public comment on this item? Hearing none, I'm gonna bring it back to the board.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Oh, you got a comment?
I just wanna comment, this organization, under your leadership, does a phenomenal job. I toured the Juvenile Justice Center with my staff, beyond impressed, and I'm usually not impressed, but I was impressed. Your staff are great, they're doing a great work with young people, obviously, who've made terrible decisions and trying to help them turn their lives around, and it's, it's a very good program, a structured program, and I just wanna commend all of you, because it's not easy work that you do, it's tough work, and sometimes with folks who are not the nicest people in the world, and yet you still have to do your job to protect this community, and you do it well. And so thank you very much for what you do.
Thank you so much.
And to Supervisor Mendez's question, on any given day, I think, your department supervises, according to this resolution, thirteen thousand five hundred individuals, that's juveniles.
All together, yes.
Yeah, that's everything. And then, in a year, I think your department completes over twenty-nine thousand reports. Put that in perspective, Fresno County's population's just under one point one million people, so you're looking at one point four percent of our population here in Fresno County that is on probation or parole, juvenile, adult, that's significant. But again, to echo Supervisor Bredefeld's words, thank you, you have a heavy lift, you do it, and also the work that you do with victims as well, sometimes that's forgotten, but victims are truly impacted for life, and the victim witness program, just everything that you do, the James Rowland organization that we have here is doing great work, so thank you for that. And with that, I'll make a motion for approval of this proclamation.
You got a second? All in favor, am I saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes, please come up.
to declare the Board of Supervisors support for the Second Amendment of the United States Constitution.
Okay, you gonna give it, or?
Yeah. So thank you, Chairman, and Board members. So we do have this Second Amendment resolution, and we have Michael Carey here, who is, I believe, the president of the Central Valley Chapter of CRPA, and we just came off the Fourth of July, celebrating the two-hundred-and-forty-ninth birthday of the United States, and of course, looking at the Bill of Rights and also the Constitution that we have, which came several years after the founding of our country, just how important the, the Bill of Rights are, and sometimes we take for granted the liberty and freedoms that we have, and so today, we have this Second Amendment resolution, and I wanna thank Supervisor Luis Chavez for working with my office to put this together, and I think he has a couple of comments as well before we hear from CRPA.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you Supervisor Magzig, thank you for working with me on this language. I think one of the things people are surprised to know about me is that I actually grew up on a farm, and I learned how to hunt as a kid with my uncle, my cousin, so this is something that I, I believe very strongly in. I wanna thank our CRPA folks for the work that they do, but more than anything, I wanna encourage our folks out there to go through the CCW training, I think that's something valuable and important for our community. You would be surprised at how much you learn through that process, having gone through it for a number of years now through the city, now transitioning over to the county, I think that's something very important, that folks that are interested in that should be responsible gun owners, and having talked with our sheriff recently about, you know, the ghost gun situation that's, that's going on, I think that's a problem, but I really wanna thank our CRPA folks for working with us on this resolution and making sure that we get that message out to our folks and encouraging responsible gun ownership, gun safety, and overall, just being a good, a good citizen, a good resident here of Fresno County. With that, Supervisor Magzig.
Yeah, so, Michael Carey, if you can come up, share a few words with us, and introduce some of the guests that you brought too, that'd be great.
Oh, sure.
Good morning. How are you all this, this day? Well, this is a small portion of our motley crew, but thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Mike Carey, and I'm the founder and chairperson, volunteer chairperson, of the Fresno County Gun Owners, and we are the official chapter of the California Rifle and Pistol Association. CRPA was founded over one hundred fifty years ago, and their primary focus in the beginning was firearm safety, education, marksmanship, and we continued to do that. We train families and individuals in safe firearm operations statewide. But in approximately nineteen sixty, with the advent of gun control, the CRPA had to shift more towards civil rights. You may not realize it, but our Second Amendment rights are under constant attack here in California by just a few activists, politicians in Sacramento. And so, it really is the only constitutional right that is continually trying to be eliminated or reduced. Every year, Sacramento introduces dozens of new anti-Second Amendment laws, and California has more gun laws on the books than any other state in the nation. Nonetheless, we still have among the highest crime rate in the, in the country. And why is that? Well, criminals, they, they don't follow the law, they don't care what laws are passed, they're going to break those laws. So consequently, when these laws are passed, it really only impacts the good, law-abiding people here in the state and right here in Fresno County. So Fresno County gun owners, we advocate for the two hundred thousand-plus gun owners here in this county, and we do that by encouraging them to get involved in the process. We educate on the issues, we get the vote out, and we also encourage folks to contact their elected representatives, and then finally, we raise funds because we fight these bad laws in the court system. Currently, CRPA has over twelve laws going through the, or, I'm sorry, twelve lawsuits Currently, CRPA has over 12 lawsuits going through federal and state courts, and we have one headed to the Supreme Court this week of the United States. But truthfully, Fresno County gun owners, it's not all really about guns, it's about our freedoms, it's about keeping ourselves and our families safe, and if called on, even protecting our nation. So we also believe that the Second Amendment really is the safeguard of all of our other fundamental rights, should there be any potential overreach by government, you guys all know that. So please help us protect our citizens here in Fresno County by sending a message to Sacramento that we support the Second Amendment, and we also support our residents' right to keep and bear arms if they choose, that's up to them. And in honor of our nation's 249th birthday, we respectfully request that you approve this proclamation and that we send that message to Sacramento and also to our people that we stand with them. So thank you so much, we appreciate your time, and also, we appreciate your service to our community. Thank you.
Is there any others, Board? Go ahead.
Yeah, Mike, first, I want to thank you for the work your organization does, I want to thank Supervisor Magsick and Chavez for bringing this. This is about, the Second Amendment has always been about freedom and protecting yourselves, and you're right, Sacramento makes it difficult to be a gun owner, they just increased the CCW time for retraining from four hours to eight hours. The only reason is to harass people, hassle them, make it more difficult for them to continue with their licenses and enjoy the rights that they have under the Constitution, and that's what Sacramento does. They want to disarm law-abiding citizens, they do little to disarm criminals, but they love to enact laws to disarm law-abiding citizens. And so I encourage people to get training with firearms to protect your families. Sadly, law enforcement can't be everywhere at every second. We have a sheriff in Fresno County who fully supports the Second Amendment and people's right to own guns and get CCWs and get the proper training, and we're grateful for that. So keep up the great work, and again, just encourage people to utilize their Second Amendment rights to protect themselves and their family. It's important, and it's a right that no matter what they try to do to erode it, we will never give up that right. It's not only codified in the United States, but it's also God-given right to protect yourself. So thank you very much.
Thank you, and we will carry on, I promise.
Thank you for your advocacy and everything you do, I mean, it's, we would have lost the Second Amendment without organizations like yours.
That's right.
Ryan, you got? Okay, is there anyone in the public that wants to speak on this?
The leading cause of death in this country among teens and children is handguns. Right now, we're looking at losing our First Amendment rights.
Hey, no clapping.
Oh, no clapping for me, but clapping for them, baby, it's okay.
At the end.
We're, our First Amendment rights are under assault. The right to privacy, the right to freedom of speech, freedom of the press, freedom of assembly are all under assault, every single one of those rights right now. Here you are hyping the Second Amendment, and I'm gonna hope that it's because when the unidentified masked men come for you, Mr. Chavez, and you, Mr. Pacheco, that you're gonna use your Second Amendment rights to defend yourselves, and the rest of you will use your Second Amendment rights to defend your friends and neighbors from being kidnapped by people who see only skin color, not status, and not human rights, the right to due process. Our right to due process is under assault, as all of you know. Kidnapping, I see you smirking, Mr. Brettafeld, you can keep your white supremacist Christianity shit to yourself and your own private life, don't be bringing it to the public, that is not why we pay you. First Amendment rights are under attack, as clearly a lot of people here feel the same way. And the fact that you're out here promoting a resolution to support the Second Amendment, how tone deaf are all of you? I'm so disappointed in every single one of you, it's just appalling, absolutely appalling. We have so many issues in this county, number one of which is going to be the loss of a serious amount of our workforce who are undocumented. I don't see any of you out here promoting the right to, for citizenship for our farmworkers, where's that coming from? All I see is you out here promoting them being rounded up and shipped off to prisons in El Salvador and concentration camps in Florida. So I think, I'd like to give you some food for thought when it comes to that, and you better think about what you're paid to do, and it isn't to sit out here and hype the Second Amendment.
I said no clapping.
And to that last speaker, I want you to stay for a moment, so just to make a quick comment, I actually have a resolution that's going to the National Association of Counties about immigration reform, and I'll be talking about that at the end of the meeting, but I appreciate your comments. Sheriff.
Good morning, Board, and members of the public, Sheriff John Zanoni. I appreciate Supervisor Chavez and Supervisor Magsick for bringing this proclamation forward. Many times here in the state of California and across this country, we are blinded by the fake news in our media who goes after guns and looks at things from a political perspective, but nobody wants to tell you that our law-abiding gun owners, our CCW holders here in Fresno County are not involved in crimes. It's less than 1/10 of 1% when we look at the statistics of CCW holders who are trained, whether they're getting the renewal for eight hours or the new permit for 16 hours, that are involved in gun violence. Our issues with guns are people that are untrained, or people that should not have them, or illegally possessing them, and that is something that several of you mentioned when we talk about the state of California, we're focused on legal gun owners, making it so difficult to get a CCW, looking at certain things when it comes to firearms, like what we call the Glock sear, and any gun that can have what we call a Glock sear is going to be outlawed when people in Sacramento start thinking about these things. Well, let me tell you, I don't have a Glock sear, I don't know many people that do, because we associate with law-abiding, responsible gun owners. But I could tell you, Hazem, the criminals and the gang members that our deputies and our magic task force and our police officers arrest on the streets of this county every day, you want to stop gun crimes? You start holding criminals accountable and quit targeting our good, law-abiding gun owners who are just exercising their Second Amendment rights, which are given to us with the Constitution of this great country that we call the United States of America. Thank you.
Thank you. You gonna make a motion?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's done.
I'll make a motion for approval of this resolution.
Second.
Okay, you got a motion, a second, all in favor is going to say an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, the motion carries, please come up.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, we now take up our consent items from this morning. Our first item that was pulled by a member of the public, item 25, under the Board of Supervisors, receive and file community outreach expenditures which do not exceed $1,500 from March 11th through June 30th, 2025, approved by County Council per administrative policy number 75. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, this item is before your Board, as directed by your Board on May 6, 2025, you directed the clerk to provide the Board a report every three months on the consent agenda of community outreach expenditures which do not exceed $1,500 per your administrative policy 75.
Yeah, this is just a report out.
And this is a member of the public who pulled this item.
Hi, my name's Artemis Gidrum. I'm assuming, if I'm reading the agenda correctly, because I'm getting a lot of weird looks, that this is about, the reason why I pulled it was because of the nonsense about we're spending too much money on condoms, correct? Or am I mistaken in this agenda item?
This agenda item?
Agenda nine, that would be nine, that would be.
That's nine, not this one.
Yeah, that's on regular, so we will get to that one here.
Okay.
25 is about our different districts, when we help different nonprofit organizations, this is just a report out of those different organizations we've been helping the last quarter.
Okay, perfect, my apologies.
No worries.
Okay, close the public portion.
I'll move for approval of item 25.
Okay, you got a second? All in favor is going to say an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, the motion carries.
We now take up item 29.1, pulled by Supervisor.
No, 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 just for that item.
We are now at item 29.1, under County Council, pulled by Supervisor Brettafield, under administrative policy number 34, for competitive bids or requests for proposals determined that the exception to the competitive bidding requirements under AP 34 is satisfied and a suspension of competition is warranted to obtain the services and special legal counsel to assist the county.
So the question I have is, why would we enter into a $500,000 contract for these BBK services? If we need the services, why wouldn't we just consult with them and get, pay them for that specific issue as opposed to having an ongoing yearly, annual $500,000 contract?
The reason why it's helpful to have a contract like this is often we have situations arise that we need to consult with them promptly prior to the next board meeting, prior to being able to prepare an agreement to bring to the Board, and if we need to consult with them on an expedited basis and we don't have a contract in place, we're not able to pay them, the auditor won't approve any payments to them. If we have a contract like this in place, then when those issues arise, then we can engage them promptly in order to ensure the county is served.
So it's like paying a retainer?
Not quite. So this is a, this is a contract where we would pay by the hour up to a cap, so when you see the $500,000 amount, that is not the county pays $500,000 and then draws it down, rather, it is the county, under the contract, has the right to engage them for services paid by the hour as the services are actually performed.
Okay, so they get paid when the services are performed?
Yes.
And you're saying you can't just do that if we need them, to consult with them, because it's a little quicker that we have a contract saying, if we need you, you're available?
Under the county's policies, up to $200,000 can be done through the purchasing manager. The county has already done enough work with this firm that we no longer can use that process, we have to bring them to the Board for these services, so that is a much slower process than going to the purchasing manager.
Okay, and our lawyers can't provide these services?
No, no, these are the situations where we need to augment the force of our office with attorneys who have specialized experience in particular kinds of matters, particularly when we need to move quickly.
Okay, and so we're looking to hire a new county council, and that's coming up very quickly. I would like to perhaps hold off on this, unless you're gonna tell me that it's, you know, an urgent matter and we need to do this, because it is my hope the county council is really going to take a look at the whole department and how they spend money, and I can change things in a rather dramatic way, and so I would ask the Board, let's hold off on this item unless there's a.
There is an urgent matter on which we need their assistance immediately.
There is?
Yes.
I have an idea, so with this item, when the new county council is selected, maybe we can make sure it's in the contract, that if the new county council wants to move in a different direction, we're not locked in with this firm to have to use them, that we can choose to use a different firm so we don't use all $500,000.
We are certainly not locked in to this firm under the contract, the firm would provide services only as engaged by the county council, and if the county council does not engage them, they would not provide services.
Yeah, he could.
Okay, I can live with that.
When he gets on board, he can say, well, I don't think they're doing a good job, I'm not using them.
Yes.
I can live with that, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, any public comment on 29.1? All in favor is going to say an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, the motion carries.
We now move to item number 30, under administrative office, pulled by Supervisor Brettafield, approved and authorized chairman to execute retroactive revenue agreement with Central Valley Community Foundation for collaboration and participation in the Sierra San Joaquin Jobs Coalition of California, Jobs First.
Do you want to just, or to speak?
Oh, go ahead.
Two and a half.
No, go ahead, if you'd like to address something and.
Okay, good morning, Board, Samantha Buck, Deputy CAO. The item before your Board is an agreement with the S2J2 Group, which is the foundation, Fresno Foundation, and what it does is.
Put that mic closer to you, Sam.
Sorry. And what it does is, the foundation are the conveners of local, four county area, it's Madera, Tolari, Kings in Fresno, and then also state agencies, and the conveners are bringing the state agencies to the table, and what we're doing is planning and mapping and modeling land use, considering conservation such as ag land, water recharge projects, and really kind of the idea is taking the state agency's data, marrying it with the county, and providing a map for where to best place solar while conserving ag land and considering water recharge projects. The idea at the end of this year is to take it to the state and develop legislation to implement it.
Okay, so a couple of questions, how does the Central Valley Community Foundation, headed up by Ashley Swearingen, how is she and her organization the point person for this? What skillsets do they have that they're the ones who are leading this effort?
I can only speak to the fact that they've been designated by the state as the convener to bring these resources together, so they have brought these two or three department heads in the state to bring those resources together. They have brought some resources, and what this agreement does essentially is also gives the county funding for any participation that we have, so it pays up to $100,000 for our staff time. Beyond that, I can't really speak further than that.
Okay. Question that I have, this plan that they're looking to come up with, that we are going to provide staff to provide input, to give them data, how do we know that the data we provide them doesn't in the end get used against the county with recommendations from them that we would disagree with, that they might recommend that we change our general plan? The Central Valley Community Foundation, as far as I'm concerned, is a left-wing organization, and they promote left-wing ideology led by the former mayor, and so I have a lot of concern about providing staff that, and give them information and data that ultimately will go back in a dialogue with the state that we can't trust, and can't trust this foundation based on their history to be used against us. How do we get assured of that?
I completely understand that, there is no assurance of that, except the county's gonna take her own position on this. What I would say is, the county either has a seat at the table, or some of these things are gonna be happening without our input. You know, when it comes to energy development in our county now, and I know our West Side Board members can relate to this, right now, a lot of these projects are happening without even going through our planning department, they go through the California Energy Commission, and they're just happening. Some of the impacts of that, we've had to come up with mitigation fees and things to pay for services that may have a longer-term economic impact in Fresno County. My interest is that Fresno County's interest is there, but if that disagrees with the ultimate aim of the foundation, we're not gonna go along with that, but I can't assure you of what they will do with that.
Well, I mean, that's the concern I have, we are now dealing with Measure C. She's at the COG meeting, and her foundation, along with other left-wing groups like Building Healthy Communities, led by Bernadine Sandra Celadon, insisted on having 12 people on a steering committee that will direct the plan that comes back to COG. So her agenda, her group are promoting something that will hurt, in my humble opinion, this community. They're not partners, they're agitators and have a political left-wing ideology, and I am troubled if we move forward with this, that we ignore what is happening with Measure measure C, led by Ashley Swerengen and these left-wing groups, that basically blackmail the COG that if you don't give us twelve members on a steering committee, when every mayor of the, of our county only has one, except the city of Fresno has three, and every community group only had one, but they demanded twelve, and the COG caved. And if they didn't get it, they threatened that they would do their own initiative. I'm just concerned what, what, what position this places us in in dealing with this. And then their plan wants to look at economic development across nine priorities. One of them is climate solutions. I'm not sure what she means by climate solutions. They have clean energy, broadband, water, responsible food. I'm not sure what responsible food mean, responsible food system. I'm wondering why they're not dealing with PG&E rates. PG&E continues to financially rape everyone in this community. I don't see them addressing PG&E. That might have something to do with all the donations that they give to elected officials in Sacramento and locally, and that's maybe why they don't have PG&E on here, which is really the number one concern that people have, is their rates going up. So they've got everything under the sun, except the real issue that people are concerned about is their electric and utility rates. So I just have a lot of concerns, Board, about what we're doing here and what position we might place ourselves in with recommendations that go before this left-wing, as far as I'm concerned, radical group. I'd be interested in what other feedback there might be.
I'm going to try to split the baby on this one. So we're, we're at the front end of this process, and I think some of the things that this group are going to be looking at, energy, all very important issues. And I too share your concerns. I think what the outcomes are, we don't know yet, but I think it's important for us to participate initially. But I want to make clear that if this passes, our participation doesn't guarantee our support. Our support will be there to the extent that the recommendations this board believes are going to be beneficial to Fresno County, because we are the only ones who are the policymakers here at the county. So as long as that's part of the process, I say we engage. We allow Sam and others here at the county at the table to make clear, you know, what the priorities are for us, how we want to preserve ag land. And everything that you said is valid. But I think starting the process doesn't guarantee that at the end we're locked in and have to support it, because if they move in a different direction, that's, that's not favorable to the county, then we've got to oppose.
Just a quick comment on that.
Are you recommending that it would come back to the board, whatever recommendation, and we would take a vote on whether we support it or not?
So once that plan is finalized, yes, I would say that that's got to come back to this board for final approval, yes.
And the agreement does state that our participation is not in any way an endorsement of the organization or their efforts.
And understanding supervisor, your concerns with the local agency. I have made it clear to the state agencies, California Natural Resource Agency, and the California Food and Ag, that we do not anticipate having to change the general plan. That is not our, what we want to do. And they are on board with that, but understanding your concerns.
Yeah, you might want to recommend that they deal with the real issue, like PG&E utility rates and raping our constituents financially with these ridiculous rate hikes. I'd like to see them really address that. I think people would care a great deal about that, but I suspect they're not really that interested in that. Anyway, so supervisor Maxick, you're saying this would come back and we would take a formal vote on it?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the finish. I just got one question. Now, did they get the money from the state to do this?
Yes.
So this is atypical of, of the laundering money process that the state and federal government have done in the last few years.
It, it is, and they've got regional groups up and down the state, you know, doing this. But she's, yeah, in this, in the valley, they're the group that received the funding for this.
And they're, they're basically supposed to pay us for our staff time.
Correct.
For people that are already snowed under with stuff to do.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of thoughts. I, I, I think, I'll tell you, I have a different take, obviously, than supervisor Bretfield. I think he had his Wheaties this morning. He's very feisty. It's not a right-wing or, or left-wing issue for me. I, I think the part that's concerning is there was like zero outreach by this organization when they're asking policymakers to engage and, and have a conversation about what this looks like. And when you talk about some of the language that's in there, where they're trying to select even placement of solar, or what development will look like, or even the complexities of sigma that I'm still trying to, you know, get caught up to speed on, I think those were the parts that were very concerning. At the end of the day, what is the purpose? What is the benefit? Because oftentimes, you know, a lot of the organizations get confused and think they're policymakers, and they're not. They're advocates. And, and I think there's a separation of that. And for me, I take my role very seriously as a policymaker. I like to do my due diligence, I like to do my homework, and I don't want to delegate that to a group of organizations that I have no idea what the ultimate end product or goal is. Is it to leverage dollars? Is there a promise at the end of this plan that we're going to be able to secure funding for these projects, for water storage or clean water supply? I have no idea what the end goal of this is. To me, this is just like a, like a, like a blanket, you know, group that's getting together and talking about issues that we're already doing. We have a, a planning department, we have our, our ag folks at the table. So, so I'm a little bit uncomfortable about supporting this today. I'm curious to see what you meant, supervisor Maxick, with regards to what, what this looks like when it comes back. Are we sending it back for them to answer those questions and then it comes back? Or are we allowing them to do the study, and then they'll go on case-by-case basis?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm open to them moving forward with the study, because at this point, they haven't told us the outcomes. I think they're saying the outcomes will come after the data is presented, because it's a multi-county effort. So I say in good faith, we move forward, but it doesn't guarantee that we'll be supportive at the end.
Okay, Brian.
I want to hear what my colleagues.
I generally concur with supervisor Chavez. I think we have our own planning department. I believe in local control. I appreciate supervisor Bretfield bringing this off. I was actually going to remove this item myself. I think we're delegating our powers away to the state for something that we later have to oppose. I don't want a seat at the table. I want to maintain local control, and I am not in favor of this item.
Okay. Is there any public comment on item thirty? Hearing none, we'll move on.
Might I, can I say something? Yeah, I appreciate all the comments. And I, I, I do, I am concerned about what I consider to be a radical agenda. I know supervisor Chavez, you don't see it that way, and I respect that. But, but I do, just based on the history and the history of this organization, and again, the organization of what I'm seeing at the COG. And I don't think we should ignore when a foundation is doing other things that I think are very detrimental to our community, that will have long-lasting impacts for the next twenty years if measure C is not approved, will have dramatic impacts. I don't think we can ignore that, and I don't think we should ignore that. And I won't ignore that. It's, it's similar at the city. We had people in litigation suing us, and yet they're also requesting the city to grant them certain rights and privileges. How do you ignore that you're being sued? We wouldn't in the private sector, we shouldn't in the public sector. So I have a, a difficult time. I'm glad to hear comments from supervisor Pacheco. I completely agree with them. And for that reason, I'm not going to support this. And so I don't know where the rest of my colleagues are, and I appreciate trying to split the baby and come up with a solution. But I have no, no trust in this organization. I don't know what their agenda is. I've seen it be radical. I've seen what they've done at, at the COG with measure C, and I simply have no trust and faith in, in this group or it being led by Ashley Swerengen.
Does anyone want to make a motion on this item?
I make a motion that we reject the item.
Well, if we don't make a motion, it dies anyway.
Okay. I'll wait then to see if somebody makes a motion.
Okay, so this item died from lack of motion.
Right, thank you. We now move to item thirty-four, which was pulled by supervisor Maxick due to the Levine Act, under administrative policy thirty-four, for competitive bids or requests for proposals determining exception to the competitive bidding requirement under AP is satisfied and a suspension of competition is warranted due to the unusual extraordinary circumstances due to the competitive nature of master's agreement.
And there's, there's three of us, I think, that have to abstain, so we've got to draw paper.
Thirty-four.
Forty-four.
This is thirty-four.
Oh, thirty.
Thirty-four.
Just me, just me.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
I didn't even know thirty-four was on the list.
Did your first deal today, counsel?
Need a motion?
I don't know that.
I make a motion.
Got a motion, a second. Is there anyone that wants to speak about thirty-four? Got a motion and a second. All in favor is going to say an aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Then we'll go to forty-four.
Now we go to forty-four, and due to three individual supervisors having to recuse themselves due to the Levine Act, we will have a drawing. And due to the last time, the same three individuals, we had supervisor Bretfield start first. So on this one, we're going to have supervisor Pacheco draw first, just to be fair.
And just for the record, what we have here is three members of the board, which is a majority, have been conflicted out of this item under the Levine Act. And so under the rule of necessity, by which the board still needs to carry out its essential functions, lots will be drawn among the three conflicted disqualified supervisors to establish a minimal quorum of three supervisors. So one of those three, according to lots drawn, will serve on this item.
No, Nathan.
I don't have friends. Chairman Mendez and I are the only, lonely ones that don't have friends.
Unfortunately, Gary, there's no prize for winning the draw.
And, and the record should show that supervisor Bretfield has drawn a lot to serve on this item.
Okay.
Need a motion?
Yeah.
Make a motion?
Yeah, got a motion.
Second.
Second. Is there any public comment on forty-four? All in favor is going to say an aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
That concludes all consentage items, consentage items, consentage, and I is full from this morning. We now return back to your regular agenda. Item number seven, under the Auditor, Controller, Treasurer, Tax Collector, conduct hearing on petition by Juan Sandoval to rescind the county sale of a thirty-three point three percent undivided interest of APN three-six-oh dash one-eight-oh dash three-oh suffix oh-two.
Morning. Chair just walked out, so members of the board, Oscar Garcia, Auditor, Controller, Treasurer, Tax Collector, I'm here before you because we had a tax sale, and the, the person that was sold that thirty-three percent ownership, and I have not eyeing, is going to present our case with the facts.
Good morning, members of the boards. Okay. So this is hearing on decision on March twenty-twenty-five tax sale. The subject property is parcel three-six-zero-one-eight-zero-thirty suffix zero-three, zero-two. It's a thirty-three point three percent undivided interest. The petitioner is Juan R. Sandoval. This is a subject property. It's a fourteen point eight-one acre located, a part of District Four. It's an open land. An overview, so the previous assessee and party of interest. Michael, Michelle, Jose, and Marisol own sixty-six point seven of undivided interest. Juan and Gudelia Sandoval own thirty-three point three percent undivided interest. The petitioner is Juan Sandoval, the owner of the thirty-three percent interest. It's a joint owner alleged the following. One failed to be given proper notices and two lack of due process. The purchaser is Michelle Jose, the sixty-six point seven owner, undivided interest owner. The tax collector will present that all statutory processes will follow, which satisfies due process. The context of this case, California Silver Code, Section six-eight-three, undivided co-owner means all owner have the right to the entire property, and such interest can be structured as a joint tenancy, where each individual holds an equal right to the whole property. Undivided interest bill segregation start with Revenue and Taxation Code two-eight-two-one through two-eight-two-seven. Postal is not split, allow each owner to be billed separately for their portion of the property taxes. The, so, Mr. Jose Mitchell has been requesting that the bill be split according to the percentage of ownership since October sixth, two thousand seventeen. The bill was split into two, sixty-six point seven percent was to Michelle Jose and Marisol under suffix zero-one. The thirty-three point three percent was to Juan Sandoval and Gudelia, suffix zero-two. The first default of the thirty-three point three percent, suffix zero-two, to Mr. Sandoval, started on sixth twenty-eight, two thousand nineteen. Each year, the, it's continued to be unpaid. It became subject to the tax collector powder sale, recorded notice of powder sale on July fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four, doc two-zero-two-four-dish-zero-zero-six-two-two-nine-one. So the address of the two bills, to Mr. Mitchell, it was from two thousand seventeen to twenty-twenty-three. It was sent to eight-one-three-one South Frankwood, Ridley. And for the fiscal twenty-three to twenty-four, it was eleven-six-five East Manning. For the suffix zero-two, to Mr. Sandoval, it was from two thousand seventeen to twenty-twenty-four. It was two-zero-two-three-one East Clayton, Ridley. So claim number one, petitioner claimed that he did not receive notice of the proposed tax sale as required by the California Revenue and Taxation Code, Section three-three-six-one and three-seven-zero-one. Claim number two, petitioner claimed that he had no knowledge that his property was scheduled for his sale and was deprived of any meaningful opportunity to redeem the property or participate in the process, resulting in a loss of ownership without proper due process. Responding to claim number one and two, on the following slide, ten through to slide twenty-two, are the effort our office made to notify all party of interest and satisfy the statutory notice requirement of California Revenue and Taxation Code thirty-three-six-one. These are certified mailing of impending powder sale notice, publication of impending powder sale notice, recording notice of powder sale, conducting search for party of interest, certified mailing of notices to tax sale of all party of interest, publishing notice of public auction, and conducting skip tracing or return notice of the tax sale. California Revenue and Taxation Code thirty-seven-zero-one-B, the tax collector shall make a reasonable effort to obtain the last name and last known mailing address of all parties of interest. The tax collector reasonable effort included utilizing a third-party vendor to find the last name and last known mailing address of the party of interest. Should a letter from an initial mailing is returned, internal skip tracing is conducted, using the property tax system to find names and addresses that could be linked, looking at property tax payment records, using Google and search, and other search engines, utilizing recorder system to search for new recorded documentation, skip trace using LexisNexus, DMV system, Court Odyssey system, and Bankruptcy Pacer. So this is the notice. So on June fourth, twenty-twenty-four, we send out the impending powder sale notice. This is the green showing that it was received by someone. It was sent to eleven-six-five East Manning, belong, the address belonging to Mr. Sando, uh, Mr. Mitchell. This is us recording the impending powder sale. On May thirty-first, June seventh, and June fourteenth, showing that the property was listed. The, this is the notice of powder sale, tax of all the property. So on July fifteen, we recorded the notice of powder sale, this document number mentioned previously, twenty-twenty-four zero-zero-six-two-two-nine-one. This is the list showing twenty-five letter being mailed out to party of interest for the APN three-six-zero-one-eight-zero-thirty. Mr. Sandoval was on there, including the skip tracing. This, this is the initial notice of the sale of the property. It was sent to Mr. Sandoval, and Gudelia Sandoval located on the same address, two-zero-two-three-one Clayton Avenue, really. This is showing the U.S. mail log that we sent those as proof. These two, though, will return to our office on February third, two thousand twenty-five as returned to sender on claim unable to forward. It was sent to two-zero-two-three-one Clayton, Ridley, is the address the petitioner have on his petition. So the, we conducted a skip tracing, and three different addresses were found. And then on February fifth, twelve, and nineteen, we were required to publish the auction, the date of the auction. So the skip tracing was conducted on those two return. One was sent to Gudelia Sandoval at twelve-three-seven North Fairfax Avenue, West Hollywood. The other two was sent to Mr. Juan Sandoval, two-eight-nine North L Street, Dinuba, and the other one was eleven-six-five East Manning, Ridley. Again, showing our record that we did mail those out. Of the three that were sent out, one of them was received by and signed by Mr. Edgar, and it was sent to the eleven-six-five East Manning. The other two was not received. It was returned to our office. So this is a recap, what we did to satisfy the statutory requirement. Annual tax bill and delinquent notices mailed each year to assess at the address shown on the tax roll stating that these are delinquent taxes for the prior year. The notice of powder sale was recorded on July fifteen, two thousand twenty-four, the document mentioned previously, twenty-twenty-four-dish-zero-zero-six-two-two-nine-one. The notice of tax sale mailed out to the party of interest on January thirteenth, two thousand twenty. thousand twenty-five. Under Revenue and Taxation Code, Section thirty-seven oh one, these notice must be sent not less than forty-five days nor more than hundred and twenty days. Published in the Business Journal on February fifth, twelve and nineteen, two thousand twenty-five. The personal contact visit was not required and the tax deed to purchaser was recorded on April twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-five. It was recorded to Clarissa Mitchell, the daughter of the purchaser, Mr. Mitchell Jose, Jose Mitchell. As part of our process, the purchaser can fill out a vesting form and they can list any names they want to invest in the property they purchased to. Fourth finding necessary to rescind the sale. The property should not have been sold, one. Two, property have not transferred or conveyed by purchaser to a bona fide purchaser for value since the deed of the purchase was recorded on April twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-five. Number three, property has not become subject to a bona fide encumbrance for value since the deed to the purchaser as recorded on April twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-five. Number four, the purchaser received notice of the hearing as required by Revenue and Taxation Code thirty-seven thirty-one subdivision B, two. Recommendation, staff believe that the first finding that this property should not have been sold cannot be made. Staff believe that the sale of the property is valid and staff recommendation is to not rescind the sale. That concludes the presentation. Thank you.
And I believe Mr. Sandoval is here to speak on his behalf.
Good morning, Chairman Mendez and supervisors. Through the paperwork that Mr. Garcia has provided, he has basically shown you that he procedurally followed process. The last time that I was here in May to bring this to your attention, you also authorized Mr. Garcia at that meeting to put some teeth into being able to collect property taxes because according to what he said, he was having problems collecting those property taxes. And I remember Mr. Buddy Mendez indicating, well, we're going to have to use jokingly guerrilla tactics to do so. I'm the other side of the coin, okay? I feel that it's not guerrilla tactics for me. I've been robbed out of my property because even though Mr. Garcia showed that he followed procedure, you never saw that I was personally notified. There's notices there that for whatever reason never reached me and they were sent, but you will never see a notice where I was personally notified and that I had received that notice. Now, you show addresses that do not pertain to me. They pertain to the person that purchased the property. There was one in Dinuba, which is where the real estate for Roberto Michel is at. And there's the other address on Manning is also their business. So, they received the letter. It shows that Edgar, the son of Michel, received the letter. You would think that they know me. They go to the property because they have citrus orchards and they're leased there three, four times a day, on a weekly basis, that they could have sent that letter to me and say, hey, do you realize that, you know, your property is being, is at risk? They never brought that letter. They received the letter, but I didn't. The purchasers of the property. Now, let me take you back. Page, page two of the packet that I provided indicates when I purchased that property in two thousand ten, two thousand eleven, my first tax bill was under four hundred and sixty dollars for the year, two hundred and twenty-nine, I think, for, in two installments. Then, page three shows where I deeded two-thirds of the property to Michel. The agreement, since I granddeeded that, since the property taxes were only under, under five hundred, the agreement was that he would, that he would pay the property taxes and I would take care of the water assessment. The lowest the water assessment is, is a three hundred and twenty on top of whatever overage of water you use, sometimes ranging to a thousand over a thousand. So, I took care of that and there's a receipt there as of June where I continue with that agreement. Now, what's interesting that in the paperwork that Mr. Garcia showed is that in two thousand seventeen, Michel requests that the bills be split. I was never notified of that. To this date, I have never received a statement that it was, it was split. So, what happened? What happened there? What happened to the process? Where would I have been called to check or to verify that there's, it's now split and so now we need to do evaluation for whatever the property of my one-third is? To this date, I don't know how much that would be because I have never received a statement. And so, there's, there's, there's several inconsistencies here. You know, we, we voted depending on the area for our members to represent us as your constituents. Mr. Garcia is here as an employee and yes, he done everything procedurally. But is it fair to me that I was never notified? Now, the property, from what I understand from the research that I did, started at forty-six thousand and I think was purchased for a hundred and one thousand. That's not even the money that I had put in the stables and which I house over twenty-five horses, half of which are rescue horses and the other half mine that I breed. It's not just a piece of property. It's a property that I had been developing for over fifteen years. Why would I not pay the taxes that would be less than five hundred a year? Now, the people that have taken advantage because the person that purchased the property was actually Roberto Michel or Robert Michel, son to Jose Michel that I granted the land to from using his real estate company. When I called, when I received the notice that I sent you, that their attorney sent me, that they want me to take everything out of the property, that was the first time that it was brought to my attention. April twenty-fifth is when I received that letter. That was on a Friday. So, Monday, the twenty-eighth, I called to see what was going on. And they indicated that it had been auctioned. I said, I asked them, you know, so has the sale been final? Because I'm totally unaware. And they indicated, yes, it's, it's final. There's nothing that you can, that you can do about it. So, at that point, I was, you know, I need, I need to take litigation to stop the process. But then I noticed that you were going to have your, your board meeting and that's why I showed and talked and spoke to you during a public session and brought it to your attention and that has stopped the, the, the sale. But in that particular situation, I called on the twenty-eighth and they told me the sale had been final, yet the final date shows that it was on the twenty-ninth. Mr. Garcia signed the property over on the twenty-ninth, one day after, and I have the proof here that I called the office on the twenty-eighth on my phone to see what was going on. And so, understand that, based on the, on the latitude that you gave Mr. Garcia to, when they're, when you're not able to collect taxes to put liens on properties, on the other side of the coin, there's people such as me and maybe some that don't understand the process that might have gotten notified and how do you rescue a property that's up for auction? In my case, there's no proof that you, that Mr. Garcia has that I was notified. Whenever that split change was made, which broke the agreement between me and Mr. Michel, that was never brought to my attention. So, that tells me that he has been receiving the notices. There's two addresses there, the one in Dinuba and the one in Manning that belongs to them. Edgar received the notice. I didn't. Again, I ask you, why wouldn't they contact me if they received that letter at their business and said, hey, Juan, you know that this is happening? They received it?
Okay, are you, you done?
You know, when, when, when your, when your property is at risk of you not knowing anything about it, it's not about being done. I haven't been done since April twenty-fifth when I, when I, when I.
I just asked you, are you done talking or you just, you needed to explain a little more?
Well, there's, there's several documents that I, that I provided there that I hope you, you took the time. You know, I feel like I've been double-crossed from the same persons that, that I gifted, that I granddeeded two-thirds of the property because they, they, they were in need of doing something to start their businesses? And that's between me and them. But the part about, about the county from the time of splitting the property, there's no evidence there that I was ever called to be notified that the property is now split and this person pays this and this person pays this.
Mr. Sandoval, I, I believe you've done an adequate job. I believe it'd be in your best interest if we continue through the process right now.
Okay.
I believe, yeah.
I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
Thank you.
You've done a good, you've done a good job. I do.
That it's a way of living.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions from the board?
So, my guess to Oscar, you followed the law and the law as it relates to paying taxes is it's the, as I understand it, it's the property owner's responsibility to make sure that they pay their taxes on time, correct?
Correct.
And I can appreciate Juan, kind of the explanation and it sounds like at some point prior, maybe in two thousand five, you indicated that you deeded two-thirds of the property to this Michel. Yeah, or twenty fifteen. And then there's, there was a relationship there with that person. And so, for me, what, what's very important is making sure that procedurally we follow the law. So, I want to say there's, I don't know how many hundreds of thousands of parcels that we have throughout the county, but it's important for us to follow the law, follow processes and procedures. And sometimes there are issues that come up which, you know, you may have to file civil litigation to try to work out what happened between you and, you know, and Michelle. But I, I appreciate you being here today and I'm sorry that you're in this predicament.
Who, who ended up with the property in the process?
It was the daughter of the person who purchased it, who's the sixty-six and two-third owner right now.
Yeah.
He just deeded it directly to her.
Yeah, did you want to speak?
Yeah, so I was granted the deed. He is correct. We were receiving his letters. I'm not going to deny that. When my father did split the taxes, he just assumed since he was also part of the owner, we were receiving his mail as well as we thought he would receive our tax letters, certificates and notices, whatever they're called. So, that's why we didn't forward any to him because we thought since as legal owners, we also receive his letters and he would receive ours. I did want to note, my brother, Robert, has nothing to do with this. He is in real estate, but he has nothing to do with this Dinuba address. I honestly don't know who that one belongs to. The Manning address is our family business. But I'm, I want to apologize on behalf of myself and my dad. We weren't aware that he wasn't receiving and like I said, we didn't bother on saying anything because we just assumed that the county would automatically send him as well the information. Whether he did or he didn't receive that, well, I can't really, you know, say anything on behalf of that. But he actually did call my father the day of the auction. The auction was live the twenty-seventh. It finished on the twenty-eighth. He mentioned that it was a scam or something like that. My dad wasn't there. It was, it was myself. So, I'm not too sure. I mean, I'm sure he had to have some knowledge of the auction because he did call him that day of. But in regards to that, I, I don't really know what to say. I mean, I'm sorry you didn't have information before, but it wasn't with any bad intentions or anything like that.
Okay, thank you. Did you want to add something?
Well, for me, Mr. Chairman, one, I appreciate the lady's honesty. And while I would say that our assessor, tax collector has again followed the letter of the law, this is not the first time we have faced this situation. I believe we have asked to have steps taken so that we aren't continuously faced with this. I believe those steps were taken, but the way I understand it, when you sent the certified letter, Mr. Sandoval never received that. In fact, it was returned to the office. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. So, again, I happen to believe that the applicant by the petitioner, Mr. Sandoval, I believe he's very credible. I believe he's telling the truth. I believe he had a partnership agreement. And from what I've heard today, I believe he kept his end of the deal up and his partner changed the terms on him and changed the tax procedure without his notification. I do not agree with our, the law in that because we publicize it in a paper that that notifies us. I can tell you owning many parcels, if mine were ever published in the Bee or the Journal, I would not know that. I don't look in that every day to see if my individual numbers listed. I think that's impractical for the average person to do. So, I believe that the young lady fully acknowledged that they received the letters and did not forward it to him. Therefore, for me, because of that, again, supervisor, it's in your, your district. Oh, Buddy, sorry Buddy, supervisor in your district. But I believe the petitioner is credible and I'm willing to uphold the petition and revoke the sale because I believe through no fault of his own and no knowledge, his partner took the other half from him and fully acknowledged here in public that they got the notice and never gave it to them until the day of the sale. Well, how many of us are going to go on the day of the sale and know what to do to save our property?
And they bought it.
Yeah, and then bought it. That's the, that's the bad part. That's the bad part. To me, they, they hoodwinked him and I believe we should rescind the sale. But that is only my opinion based on what I heard today and I will support the petitioner. I believe he was squinched out of his property.
No, I totally agree.
But again, supervisor, your, your district.
Agree with you. I mean, he got swindled out of the property and I don't know if, do you own any other property? And you pay the property tax on that?
The thing for me, though, that I can, is he agreed. He would pay the water portion and his other partner paid the tax. So, that's why he's just assuming he's doing his share. They got to do his.
I've rented property in the past that, you know, I paid the property tax, but the property bill went to the owner. They forwarded to me. I paid it, you know, which in, you know, your business arrangement was kind of highly unusual that you don't get a, a tax bill, but you're still in, and you have to rely on them paying it.
And my comments are only to say that Oscar's office is not at fault.
No.
That's, that's where I'm at.
Oscar is not at fault.
Yeah, because his only recourse is, no, I mean, for the guy that lost the property, his only recourse is to sue them and they'll be in litigation for a long time. Yeah. So, I, I support, you know, what Supervisor Pacheco said, you know, even though I understand you got into a bad business deal because I would never get into a deal where I'm assuming somebody's going to pay the taxes.
I think to your point, supervisor, is you want to trust, but you have to verify.
Exactly.
So, each and every year, I believe your point is, is that was their job to pay, but you need to follow up with Mr. Garcia's office and make sure your taxes have in fact been paid, I believe was your, your point.
I think your only problem is that you'll be in litigation for a long time trying to straighten this out and we could probably straighten out for you right now. Yeah, is there any other public comment?
I think he was hoodwinked.
What'd you say?
I think they squinched him and they got him. I think he's pretty credible.
I think they squinched him, and they got him. I think he's pretty credible or honest.
Yeah.
She said, what she said, that she didn't owe you, so, uh, made him forward the mail and all that, so.
Okay, thank, thank you. Yeah.
You want to make everybody cheer in your district?
I'll make a motion that would be to rescind the tax sale.
I'll, I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, all in favor, so am I saying an aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. We now move title number eight under the administrative office. Receive update on the impacts of the state and federal budgets on the county budget and provide direction staff regarding department head presentations for the fiscal year 25-26, September budget hearings.
Good morning Chairman and members of the board. Paul Nerland, your CAO. We also have Budget Director Paige Betavides here this morning. Um, we are preparing next year's budget, and department budgets were actually due to our office yesterday. And I can report that even after taking 5% cuts in most of our departments, there's still a decent side deficit that we are working to close using mainly one-time funds, which we'll talk more about later. Um, what we're going to do this morning is share a brief update on the state and federal budget impacts on the county budget, just very brief, uh, and then talk about the budget hearings and get your direction on the format. Uh, I'm going to have Paige now share brief highlights from the state budget and some of the impact of that on the county budget. Paige?
Good morning, Board. The final fiscal year 25-26 state budget of 321.1 billion rejected the governor's proposed cuts to address an estimated deficit of about 12 billion and instead offered, um, some different solutions. I'm just going to highlight a couple, uh, very briefly. Um, under homelessness, the budget did not include new funding to address homelessness. However, budget trailer bill language appropriates funding for round seven of the homeless housing assistance and prevention, or H-HAP program, in fiscal year 26-27. Nonetheless, the H-HAP program was not funded for the fiscal year 25-26. Uh, this is not likely to have a direct impact or immediate direct impact on the county's funding due to the availability of existing funding. However, there may be an impact on funding for the county's regional partners, which could have an indirect impact on the county. Um, under VOCA funding, or the Victims of Crime Act, um, the budget includes 100 million general fund one-time to supplement the federal, uh, VOCA Act, or Victims of Crime Act, that is, with 97 million allocated for grants and 3 million allocated for grant administration through Cal OES. This backfill allows the probation department to balance their budget for, uh, this program in fiscal year 25-26 without the need to reduce current service levels in this area. Most significantly, uh, this, i- i- it's important to note that the 25 Budget Act or Spending Agreement does not reflect any assumptions about federal cuts. The state has opted to instead include flexible authority for the California Department of Finance to make mid-year adjustments to the Budget Act. Uh, as CSAC explained in their summary on the 2025 Budget Act, "The budget includes language that authorizes the Director of the California Department of Finance to reduce any item of appropriation in the budget in response to federal action that reduces funding for California. This authority is not limited to reducing federal fund appropriations in the state budget to mirror federal changes. Rather, the budget authorizes the Department of Finance to reduce any state appropriation from any funding source for any program, project, or function to align with reduced federal funding." This authority allows the administration to take swift action following federal funding cuts and bypasses the traditional process to significantly amend the budget mid-year, which would ordinarily include introducing a Budget Bill Junior and holding budget committee hearings in both houses, passage by the legislature and enactment by the administration. With that, I will turn it back to Paul to address the federal budget.
So, there's obviously a busy couple weeks with the federal budget. The, the one big beautiful bill act, as you know, was signed into law on July 4th, and there's many changes that are still being absorbed with that act. But a couple of big ones that affect counties, uh, I want your board to be aware of. Uh, there's significant cuts to the Supplemental Nutritional Assistance Program, or, or SNAP, CalFresh, as we call it here in Fresno County, and Medicaid, or Medi-Cal, as we have it in California, and also clean energy, uh, tax credit. So, a couple just illustrate that. So, Medicaid, uh, so California's implementation Medicaid in Fresno County, that's about 530,000 people, uh, with, with healthcare coverage. Uh, there's additional requirements that require, uh, recertification, uh, and also work requirements for this population every six months instead of every 12 months. And so, the staff, uh, and the work involved with that will be certainly more complex, and, and that is being, uh, looked at as we speak. The SNAP program is one that will affect the budget, thankfully not this next year. And that's, uh, partially thankfully to advocacy by your board and our local, uh, delegation. Uh, effective October 2026, the, the county share for the administration of the food stamp program and DSS is estimated to cost us an additional $6.5 million due to the fact that the federal share is being reduced from 50% to 25%. So, that's a big impact. It is pushed back one fiscal year, uh, but that is something that we're looking at. Uh, we've also got programs like the SNAP education program that funds positions in public health, health educators, uh, that looks like it is being eliminated in October of this next year. So, there is some impacts. We're still evaluating the other impacts, and we'll report back. But fiscally, thankfully, as far as the next fiscal year, it's, it's more limited, uh, which allows us to move forward with the budget. As to the budget hearings that are scheduled for the week of September 15th, uh, in, in May of this year, uh, I spoke to your board about options for, um, how your board would like to see the presentations, and what I'd like to do at this moment is give you three options. They're not the only options, uh, but they're suggestions or ideas for presentation at the budget hearings in September. Uh, option number one is a process that is, uh, I'll call it driven by board questions, where the CAO's office gives a presentation. Uh, the board calls department heads for questions and/or presentations based on your priorities. That's, that's option one. Option two, uh, all departments present. There's a CAO presentation. Each department gives a five-to-seven minute presentation focused on the biggest changes in their budget and the impacts of reductions if applicable. Uh, number three is kind of a hybrid of those. Uh, I'll call it core services and impacts. Uh, we would give a presentation, but I know there's certain services that, uh, are priorities of your board. Uh, things where you're getting calls from constituents and the impact of cuts are things that you would want to hear. And that may be a smaller group of departments that you would hear from. I would say seven to 10 max that would come and give short presentations. Other departments would be in the audience available for any questions or presentations as your board requests. There's certainly other options, but I thought I'd provide some suggestions to begin that discussion. But what I'm looking for today, uh, is your direction when it comes to the format of budget hearings as we prepare for that beginning the week of September 15th. And I'll pause there for, for questions or comments on that.
Any questions from the board? Go ahead.
So, again, uh, your goal is to get the budget books to the board, uh, about three weeks, two to three weeks before, um, September 15th, correct?
Yes.
I know for my office and my review of the budget, I spent a lot of time talking to Paige as well as other department heads prior to, um, I, I don't need, um, you know, a lot of presentations per se, but I'm just one supervisor. What I would suggest, uh, for me, what would be good is allow that open communication between your office and department heads for all the board, like what you've done. And then from there, if, uh, you know, if, if I believe there needs to be a deeper dive, I can share that with you, but, um, at this point in time, I would suggest that because I really appreciate the open communication and dialogue, um, as we move into the budget process.
I just want to remind everybody, this is our budget. It isn't like across the street where it's the mayor's budget. You guys basically have to lay it all out there, you know, because it's not your budget.
Right.
And, and really, uh, like Nathan said, I mean, the more you want to know, the more you need to camp out at, uh, at her office. And get the, you know, if you got questions, we'll get a book of everything. I kind of like the hybrid deal that you were talking about.
Yeah, I-
Go ahead.
Okay, yeah, I like the hybrid, uh, as well. And I will tell you, after the city council tears into the mayor's budget, I think the city council would say, "It's their budget," uh, with 100 different motions to change it. Um, but I, I appreciate, uh, Supervisor Magzig's position. I, I like the hybrid too. I, I don't expect every department to come in. We don't need that. There's tons of departments. But I think there are critical departments. Uh, there are departments that, um, obviously take up much of the budget. Uh, we certainly talk about, you know, law enforcement and, and the sheriff's, uh, budget. And, and I know, I don't know if Sheriff Sanone is still here, but he's expressed, he'd like to come before the, the board, and so I'd like to do the hybrid. I think we can pick whatever, seven to 10. I think you're, you're right, 10 maximum, but maybe as little as, as few as seven. Uh, because I would like to hear, uh, from them. And again, I think it's important because I think the public gets to hear as opposed to, you know, Supervisor Magzig or, or me just calling somebody to have this question, and then we come out here and, and a budget's, uh, approved in what appears to be 15 minutes. I don't think that serves the public well, and so I think it's, it's important that we have what we consider some of the critical departments to come, the, the departments that really use a lot of resources, departments that are, uh, very critical to public safety. Um, and I think we should decide what those are, and it would be a hybrid, and I think it would be beneficial for the public. And at the end of the day, it's, we're all here for the public. And, uh, everything we do here is funded by the public, and they ought to be able to weigh in on, on those critical departments, and so I think it, it serves us well to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, our CAO, I think, knows already my comfort level. I'm a big data junkie, and, and I think we're going to have to deal with a lot of what you just described. Um, Paul, with regards to this, I don't think there's anything beautiful about the bill. I think it's ugly, um, and a lot of the draconian cuts that are going to happen are going to hurt our people locally. And I think for me, I want to have that data point ready to go because I'm not going to own that, uh, you know. Our, our Republican friends that voted for that, that passed it, they're going to own that. But I think we need to communicate to our local folk exactly how many people are going to get kicked off a SNAP. How many people are going to go without medical services? Because I think that's going to help us triage how we respond to that. So, on those data points, for me at least, it would be very helpful to see, I think, the, yesterday we talked about 52% of residents in Fresno County. Over half of our folks receive some type of service from the county. And I think for me, I, I want to really hone in on what Department of Social Services is going to have to deal with, uh, particularly with what those work requirements are going to be. Like, how do you ask somebody that has Down Syndrome to go look for a job? How do you ask somebody that's disabled to go look for a job, right? So, what do those data points look like? And more importantly, how are we going to respond to that? People that we're going to have to kick off of the system, how, how is that process going to look like? I want to be very transparent with our folks in Fresno County, uh, on what these cuts mean because I think at some point, we have to humanize. They're not just data points or numbers, they're people, they're human beings, uh, that are going to hurt. Um, and I want to make sure we have that information, uh, ready to go. Thank you.
Super, and we just want to ask Supervisor Chavez, so are you amenable to having this hybrid? The hybrid, okay, where we bring, and then I think we should decide at some point which departments we want to, to come before the board. And again, I don't think this has to be a lengthy budget pro, I mean, uh, when they present their budget, you know, five, 10 minutes is all, and then we can address questions.
Anybody else? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to, this is not an action item, so, this is informational, so we'll move to item nine.
Yeah, thank you. I think I heard consensus, so.
We now move title number nine under the administrative office. Approve and adopt administrative policy 80, department, department contributions of funds for non-county events or causes.
Good morning, Board. Uh, this is a follow-up to your board's direction, uh, on a process for which the county, uh, will participate in, in events in our community. And Savag from our office will be presenting this item.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. CAO, Mr. County Council, Madam Clerk. This item comes before your board based on your request from the June 10th board meeting. During that board meeting, your board directed our CAO to come back today with a policy that addresses department contributions for non-county events and causes. This policy presented to your board today requires departments to receive approval from your board through an agenda item process before making contributions to non-county events and causes. Should your board approve this item today, a management directive, a department form, and a workflow will be released to departments.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I think for the benefit of the public, I just want to make sure that folks are clear. I spent the last two days talking to some of the organizations that encouraged our folks to, to email, which I think is, is great. Thank you Supervisor Bradfield, uh, for, for this. Um, but, but I do want to make sure that we explain to folks here today, today is not the policy that a lot of folks were under the impression that this is going to give direction to, to county employees on what events they can attend, outreach, um, under the umbrella of health or, or behavioral or public health departments. This is a, a fiduciary item that will bring and force a conversation with the board on what events we decide to sponsor. I just want to make sure that folks are clear. At the end of that, uh, agenda item, I think our CAO, you put in there that that item will return. Is it the first meeting in August or the second?
First meeting.
So, first meeting in August is when we'll have that, um, conversation. Um, so, with that, I, I do want to hear the conversation with, with, uh, my colleagues and then, uh, get a chance to maybe weigh in, uh, again. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Chavez. I mean, this is just basically, it's, it's not about outreach. It's not about any, this is about direct donations.
Yeah, I would add that in many ways, it's, uh, your board has a process as well where when you're spending funds, uh, you're, it comes back to this board as well. So, it's somewhat similar to that. I don't envision it being a difficult process. Departments may come once a year and list the, uh, events they'll be participating in and be listed on your consent agenda.
Right, that just basically puts department heads in the same category that we have to live by. Is that, you know, over 1,500, we have to-
Uh, this does not do the over 1,500. This, this will have, this will be for any events where there's sponsorship.
Right, okay. Go ahead, Gary.
Yeah, um, I'm, I'm glad that this is brought before us, um, be very clear. Uh, I expressed, uh, concerns, uh, that our Department of Public Health, Behavioral Health, Social Services committed almost $6,000 without any approval from this board, uh, to, at the Gay Pride Parade to hand out rainbow condoms and lube, and, uh, that was really my objection. Uh, it's alluded to that we all up here have to get approval amongst, above anything from $1,500 through the county council and through this board. Uh, that's a way for checks and balances to make sure taxpayer money is spent appropriately. I personally don't feel that money is spent appropriately, as it was at the Gay Pride Parade. We could talk about other community events that maybe, uh, money shouldn't be spent. But this board is ultimately responsible for everything that happens in this county. That's what we're here for. Everyone represents some 225,000 people or so. We set the policy for everything that happens in the county, and it needs to be our responsibility to determine, uh, what monies are expended as well as what, uh, holidays are recognized, which is something we'll deal with in two weeks or so. Um, so, this is a policy to address, uh, that issue. Uh, if this passes today, what this means is that any department, uh, that wants to expend money for a community event has to have an agendized item approved by this board of supervisors. It's very clear. Um, I don't think, uh, that was an appropriate use of money. I completely disagree with it. And then we're, it should have come before this board, and we're all on record whether we support something like that or not. And that's the way it ought to work. And so, it brings accountability to us as board members, uh, who were elected to represent the people and be good stewards of tax dollars, and that's what this policy is all about. So, I don't know if you want to go to the public, I'm-
Okay, you hold your comments. Okay, is there, I'm going to go out to the public, I'm going to first ask for, is there anybody in favor of this item? Okay, hearing none. Those who are opposed and want to speak need to get in line right now. I'm going to limit this to 15 minutes. I'm trying to see how many people are here. Okay, if you're not in line now, don't get in line. No, this is for comment on number nine. Okay, I'm going to give you two minutes. Two minutes. Yes.
Janon. Okay. Uh, you know what? There's a red light, now there's a green light. Okay, uh, first of all, I have questions about what was mentioned because it seems like that information that was presented from, in both cases, is conflicting about what this is about. this is about. But to address, there, there's many problems depending on what this means, with this policy from a purely administrative point alone. Each department serving our community in the County of Fresno has a heavy workload and many administrative tasks that need to be met in a time-sensitive program requirement of which they are responsible to implement successfully. In order to meet the goals and purposes of the department, you, you see this when the documents come before your desk. Our department staff do not need more, our departmental staff needs more supervisor support to better implement their programs, which they do with their expertise and understanding of best practice, not make their work more challenging as they would be encumbered by additional workload to do their existing work for money already allocated for particular purposes and have the process implementing their programs significantly slowed down as they wait for Board approval, which would cause undue impediments and delays, especially with prohibitions. I want to note that implementation will result in added costs to the county associated with this unfunded mandate as it would increase personal work and time and we're already seeing that this would be a, this financial burden would be detrimental. The vagueness of the prohibition is concerning, all these activities that they're tasked to do are public purpose and, and should not be subjected to subjective determinations but done to meet the goals of the departments wherever they are. I note that as a public surface, oh.
Take your time, Seb.
My name is Theo Hobbs. I come to you as a resident, resident county, I come to you as a gay man, I come to you as a gay man who's HIV positive. And a couple of things were mentioned. Yes, everything you hear is for the public, it's funded by the public. We try to reach public health is something that is unbelievably important for obvious reasons. And events like Gay Pride, for example, it's not a county sanctioned event, of course not, but that is probably one of the best places for us to be seen. If it, if we're, if we're going to donate money and our name is going to be out there, we want that to be seen, but we want that because HIV, for example, it's very difficult in Fresno County to get help. If you don't, if you're not familiar with the system, it is very difficult to get help. But there's institutionalized stigma from top down and this is how it starts and that needs to be avoided. And every little possible way we can get our name out there and that they, people who need assistance or need to learn education and they see it, we should take. It is about outreach. Events that we choose, it is about outreach. If our name is there, again, it's just if, if we go to certain events, we're doing outreach. I mean, this is the huge, we get gay men, straight people, let's, let's not make this about gay for a second. You know, it, the flyers that, that, that the Department of Public Health give out, for example, a lot of them are directed towards women, women with children, people, you know, and, and all those are going to be in the same umbrella as, as things and just because people may have issues with being gay, you know, it, it's really obvious, so, you know, it's, this isn't about gays, this is about straight, this is about health. You guys are here to help with health and we're on the verge of, of, uh, two seconds, screw it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mike Delena. I live in Old Fig Garden. When I was the Associate Director of the Kansas City Jewish Museum Foundation's Epstein Gallery, I had the deep honor of working with the National Holocaust Museum in Washington, D.C. to bring the exhibition Nazi Persecution of Homosexuals to Kansas City. The exhibition detailed the slow march of first disenfranchising homosexuals to the eventual incarceration and the erasure of homosexuals in Nazi Germany. The Nazi attack on the queer population started in much the same way that the current federal administration on a national level and this item on the local level are proposing. This proposal is clearly inspired by the current federal administration in specific aspects of Project 25 under the guise of fiscal responsibility. I see this anti-queer proposal in parallel to how things transpired in Nazi Germany. This is an effort to dehumanize and delegitimize the queer community and is an existential threat to myself and the thousands of queer people in Fresno County. Don't take my word for it. I encourage each of you to research this fact for yourself. Have your staff reach out to the National Holocaust Memorial Museum for archival information related to this retired exhibition. Hear me clearly when I say I have seen this moment in history before and I will not be erased. Fresno County can be known as a welcoming, ethical, and well-educated community or it can be known as a willfully ignorant community. Be consciously, by consciously voting to marginalize, scrutinize, and hold to a different standard, very real members of the Fresno County, Fresno County, the Fresno County Board of Supervisors would send a clear message that those community members are less than human. The Board's vote in this proposal will determine how our county is perceived in California and beyond. You are elected to represent all of the people of Fresno County and you certainly were not elected to do harm or declare invaluable or less than any segment of the community that you represent.
Did you miss me, Gary? It's been a while. Gay and trans people live rent-free in your head, don't we? Got something you want to tell us? I find it funny that you mentioned PG&E raping Fresno County residents, but instead of doing anything about that, you're trying to defund condoms. Let's jump right into why this policy is stupid. It'll make the jobs of countless county staff, including those of everyone on this Board, more unnecessarily difficult. It'll increase county costs, people need to be paid for the new workload. The policy is, I assume intentionally, overly vague, so much so that it is left to, it is left open to personal and political bias. It undermines public health and outreach, threatening essential community health services that have been proven to improve public health outcomes. It politicizes basic governmental functions to be weaponized on the basis of ideology. There's a severe lack of transparency. It will have negative impacts on other critical departments. And most importantly, this policy will disproportionately impact queer, black and brown, and poor people. But Gary, targeting marginalized people is a shock to no one. To quote the beautiful woman earlier, "You can keep that white supremacist Christian nationalist shit to yourself." To the reasonable people on this Board, please consider how ridiculous and unnecessary this policy is. No one is asking for it. It'll make our lives and yours harder.
It's a pleasure to see a couple of you. I want to start off by saying that I am both a rape and domestic violence survivor. And it's absolutely disgusting that one of the supervisors was not immediately suggested for censure when he used the word rape multiple times to suggest flippant actions of PG&Es doing this and that person's raping this person. That's disgusting. And it's the same person who was asking or is coming up here and demanding that condoms not be used to provide health, wellness, and understanding of our bodies and sexual reproductive systems. Absolutely disgusting. And that's what you're attaching your name to. When you say yes to this and you say, yes, we need to have this power, you're attaching yourself to the person who's proposing it, who is saying that organizations are raping citizens. Fresno, per capita, has over a 30% rape rate. Over 30% of the population here, per capita, has been raped. We have some of the highest domestic violence in the country. And you are standing by a man who says PG&E is raping its citizens while taking away condoms, while taking away public health initiatives from our citizens, who wants to be able to vote to say, no, you can't hand out condoms, you can't provide information, you can't provide data, you can't provide a better Fresno that we all want to live in. Instead, we're stuck with a Fresno that constantly gets on the top list of lists of highest DUIs, highest drunk rates, highest sexual STD rates, highest domestic violence rates. And you, what you want to pass, if you say yes, is we want to be on those lists, we want to make sure that our county is known as one of the worst counties in the entire country. That's disgusting.
Hi, my name is Madison Neal. I'm a PFLAG Fresno Board Member, Fresno Resident, and registered voter in your district. I'm not going to speak about the known efficacy of handing out condoms and lubricant or distributing information that helps improve the health of people's lives, but I do want to speak about the incendiary comments that have been put forth by some of our elected officials regarding the larger cultural issues surrounding this question of funding. Supervisor Bretafeld claimed that when county employees are in attendance to the Fresno Pride, they're pushing an agenda, that displaying LGBT books in libraries is pushing an agenda, that flying a rainbow flag is somehow pushing an agenda, a political agenda. It is, in fact, a celebration of the strength of the entire Fresno community. It's a celebration of our diversity as an LGBTQ community it represents. It has nothing to do with any agenda unless perhaps one is pushing an agenda of freedom or liberty or respect or the protection of civil rights. You know the principles upon which this country was founded. It is something that should be supported by the Fresno County. The Pride Parade is older than the careers of any of the politicians that are up here right now. And it, and it means that the visible LGBT community is older than any of y'all's careers as well. We are part of this city's history, this county's history, and we are part of its traditions. What was said by Supervisor Bretafeld is pushing an agenda and a political agenda at that. It's an agenda of erasure, it's an agenda of bigotry. The 16,000 people who showed up for the Fresno Pride Parade and the 20,000 who attended the festival that followed are a testament to love and support Fresno has for our community. The fact that Supervisor Bretafeld will not see this is a choice he is making. It's a choice that contradicts what the people of Fresno have shown with their support and participation. So I stand here today in absolute protest to any proposed limitations that the county might put on supporting our LGBTQ+ community or any limitations that would hamper the ability for Fresno residents to join together and celebrate our diversity and our love.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Myra Kobel. I live in District Three. I just want to cut to the chase here. Every one of you knows that this is not about a fiscal problem. The reason this item is on the agenda is because of the hateful discrimination and bias of one of your Board members against a particular group of people. That's all this is about. It's never come up before about other departments or even about the Health Department spending money on community events until it was a community event for LGBTQ people. I just wanted to read you, this is the, the mission statement of the Community Health Department. Fostering a healthier Fresno County through ongoing provision of accessible healthcare, education, and community well-being for all residents, whether you like them or not, whether you approve of their lifestyle or not. Our Health Department is doing outreach because the way you educate people is to go to them. You don't wait for them to come down to the office and make an appointment to get educated about safe sex. You go to them. And that's what the Health Department was doing. And like I said, please keep in mind, this is not a fiscal matter. This is not about money and every one of you knows it. This is about hate and bias toward gay people. Thank you.
What you're planning to do here is spend county money, Fresno tax dollars, waste county staff just to add more red tape. Allow the county to have more overreach in Fresno citizens' daily lives, including personal medical information. Bureaucracy is expensive. This policy is entirely just adding more and more bureaucracy. Why are you wasting money trying to burn gay books? Are you going to use those burned books to generate power that make our PG&E bills lower? What happened to that? Maybe we should focus on that, right? This policy is irrelevant. Stupid and a waste of everyone's time and it will waste far more money than it saves. Fix our power bills, address your right-wing hallucinations somewhere else.
Well, everyone's talked about all the things that, but, so, till the end, I have been living in Fresno County for 31 years. I pay my taxes, follow the law, never thought I would be here today. But apparently it was brought to my attention as a queer individual that visibility and outreach is being threatened. That is absolutely insane. We are the taxpayers, we are the gardeners, we are the artisans, we are the first responders, we are the retail workers, we are everything that makes this city go round. And it's absolutely hypocritical and ignorant and hateful and bigotry and all the things that have been mentioned that this is being proposed. Last month was Pride Month and to see all, to see this being threatened is so insane. Like, it is so insane. We're, we're, we're not a threat to the county of Fresno, unless we break the law, then, you know. But, but I'm an autistic individual and I'm marginalized, I'm, my, my livelihood shouldn't be threatened. Like, what, what's going on? You know? And I, you know, I never expected to be here today. You know, I've witnessed so much change in Fresno, California. And to see that this is, that we're at a crossroads for gay and queer people is, no. Pride is the heart of Fresno, California. And let it be, let it be known that it should, it will be that way till, till the end of time, so. Thank you.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the Board. Go ahead, Nathan.
So just a couple of comments. I appreciate everybody being here today. And to be clear about what we're taking up here, this has nothing to do with departments' visibility at events or outreach because I believe that our departments need to have the ability to be at all events, especially Department of Public Health. They know where they need to be to help individuals who may have HIV or other communicable diseases, people who need educational materials. So as far as I'm concerned, that's going to continue. I know for me, one of the reasons why I was supportive of this item coming back is when our departments sponsor certain events, there's only one body that sets policy here at the county and that ultimately is the Board of Supervisors. And so if there is a sponsorship request, I am very much in favor of this Board approving that. Right now discretionary revenue, I look at like the Department of Behavioral Health, which is a 400-plus million dollar program, they only receive about $600,000 of discretionary revenue. Same thing with public health, very limited amount of money they receive is discretionary. And so anytime there are dollars that are being cut as a sponsor of some type of parade or, or program or event, I just want that to be fully transparent for this Board to be able to weigh in. That is all. But I do want all of our departments to continue to participate with all communities because that's what we need to be doing as, as local government.
Go ahead.
To wrap up, Chair, you know, I represent the Tower District and I'm very proud of that because I've always supported our LGBTQ family. And when I use that term "family," I don't use that metaphorically. I mean that literally, they're my family. And I'm going to continue to support them. And, and I think for the folks that come up and speak, sometimes we get lumped in to maybe a comment that one of our colleagues said, but whatever Supervisor Bretafeld makes on comments, he owns that. We don't all own that. We, we all have our own thoughts and our own opinions about that. But I want to actually direct my comments to our legal counsel because I think the next conversation that we have in August will be, I think, very substantive. And so I want to make sure that we don't get into the space where we're essentially discriminating against one group of folks. I've been here seven months. I've attended many events, just like Supervisor Max has mentioned. I've gone to the prayer breakfast, which we sponsor and support. I've gone to faith-based food drives, organizations, and I don't want to be in the space where we're singling out one group of folks and not another one. I think we need to be equitable. To me at least, that's the role of government. So I want to make sure that our legal counsel has that direction, at least for me, because I don't want to be in a space where we're telling staff members, you know, don't go to the MLK event or don't go to the Juneteenth event, don't go to the Cinco de Mayo event. Those are all, all our community events. And when we use the phrase taxpayers, they're all taxpayers. Our LGBTQ folks are taxpayers too. They pay our salaries, they pay our wages, they pay our staff's wages. And so I want to be cognizant of the fact that as we go through this conversation, that we account for that. Because I don't want to open ourselves up for exposure or litigation or we're going to discriminate or single out one group of person and then we have to pay for that as well, which would probably be more expensive than sponsoring an event that, that we have. So I just want to put that on the record and appreciate the words of, of my colleagues. But again, I think this is a work in progress. What's important to one taxpayer might not be important to another and that's always the balancing act for, for us as government. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Gary.
Yeah, um, yeah, so I want to be very, very clear too. I have no problem with Department of Public Health being at the Gay Pride Parade, handing out literature, informing people about things that affect their health. Not a problem at all? Support that. I don't support taking taxpayer money and handing out rainbow condoms and lube for $6,000. I don't support taking taxpayer money and handing out rainbow condoms and lube for $6,000. If you want to have sex, go buy your own damn condoms, like every other person does in this world. The Department of Public Health and the taxpayer doesn't have to fund your condoms and your lube. Doesn't have to do it, it's wrong, it's inappropriate. I have no idea why they think that's okay, because it becomes advocacy, as far as I'm concerned, and misuse and inappropriate use of taxpayer money. And so I'm hoping that that doesn't happen again. And of course, if you say anything about that, you know, you're called all kinds of names, like a white supremacist, and whatever you want to call me, I'm well used to it, doesn't matter, I find it hysterical that that's what you resort to. But the fact is, this body has a responsibility for the tax dollars. And that is a completely inappropriate use of money. I share similar feelings with a needle exchange program that the county's involved in. I don't think we should be funding needles or supporting that program to hand out needles and crack pipes to drug addicts. That's the way I feel. It, to me, it's, it's not a good use of taxpayer money, it's inappropriate use of taxpayer money. We're going to talk about, since it's brought up, about holidays. This body, again, is responsible for determining what our departments are going to recognize or not recognize. And we shouldn't hide from that, we should own it and determine what this county's going to be involved in. When I got here, there was language in applications that involve DEI, Diversity Equity Inclusion. To me, that's a form of discrimination. It's been removed, and we are ultimately responsible for everything that happens in this county. I don't think, and we'll talk about this at the next time, we ought to be promoting gay pride issues in libraries that people come to. I think that's advocacy, that's not something we should be supporting. There are federal holidays with...
...community. A... ...our, our community.
There are federal holidays that we will look at, recognize, and I just don't agree with it. And, you know, as far as being marginalized, I mean, there's Gay Pride Month, there's not Veterans Month, there's not Memorial Month.
There's three. There's like three.
Any more outbursts, I'm going to clear the room.
So, as far as I'm concerned, today, these are the least marginal folks, marginalized folks, and I'm not intimidated by their attacks or the other nonsense that they espouse here. We have a duty, a moral obligation, and a fiduciary obligation to make sure that our departments don't go woke, don't buy into the, into the nonsense that unfortunately involves gender ideology and trans and all the other stuff that's destructive to our children. I'm going to fight it every which way, no matter where I am, no matter what governmental body I serve on, just as I did at the city, I'm going to do it at the county. They don't like it, tough, that's the way it goes. And many people, our constituents, support us and want us to stand up to this stuff and bring back sanity. Lastly, I'd like to recognize a reporter from the Bee. Welcome to the chamber. I'm glad you've been, I haven't seen you here for six months. We've done catalytic converters, we've done copper wire theft, we've dealt with illegal dog breedings, important issues in our community, and all you write about is woke nonsense. You promote all this other stuff that's divisive in our community, and that's why you're a bankrupt organization. I hope you pass that on to your editors, because this county's doing very important things, and all you write is a bunch of crap. And that's why you're a bankrupt organization. So welcome, we hope to see you again for something that's really meaningful.
That's all I have to say.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the board.
May I speak to that?
I will.
Oh, you're done. We're done with it.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the item.
Okay, I got a motion to approve.
I'll, I'll second it.
You got a second? All in favor, so I say an aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, three, two.
Three, two, with Supervisor Chavez and Pacheco voting no. We now move to item number 10 under the Administrative Office, establish and authorize the assignment of operational management of the Office of Information Security under the County Administrative Office and approve amendment to the side resolution establishing the Information Security Analyst Classification Series and the Information Security Manager and Chief Information Security Officer classifications. Reclassifying one Deputy Director of Information Services laterally to Chief Information Security Officer, one Information Technology Manager laterally to Information Security Manager, three Information Technology Analysts laterally to Information Security Analysts, and two Senior Network System Engineers laterally to Senior Information Security Analysts, transferring the positions from Org 8905 to Org 8909.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman Mendez and board members. My name is Eric Matthews, and I am currently serving as your Chief Information Security Officer. The item seeks your board's approval to formally establish the county of Fresno's first centralized Office of Information Security under the County Administrative Office. The Office of Information Security will lead countywide cybersecurity governance, enforce consistent security standards, and coordinate information risk management across all departments. This action does not create new positions or increase net county cost. It reclassifies and transfers existing staff currently performing cybersecurity functions into dedicated security classifications under a centralized structure. I'm available, I'm available if you have any questions.
Any questions from the board? Any public comment on this item? Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the board.
I'll move for staff's recommendation on this one.
You got a second? All in favor, so I say an aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you for your great presentation.
We now move to item number 11, under Public Health, conduct first hearing to amend the master schedule of fees charged and recovered, costs ordinance by admitting section 900 Environmental Health subsections 901 through 904, waiving reading of the ordinance in its entirety, and set the second hearing for August 5, 2025. Designate County Council to prepare a fair and adequate summary of the proposed ordinance and direct the clerk of the board to post and publish the required summary in accordance with Government Code Section 25124B1.
Go ahead.
All right, I want to make sure we're good. David Lukini, your Public Health Director. I also have here with Sim Dillon and Erica Armstrong, who oversee our animal services program. We'll go real quick. Thankfully, this morning, consent, we had the second hearing of the new ordinance, so great work. And so now we're here to ask for the first hearing approval of the new fees to support the ordinance. The application fee would help with collecting higher fees for licensing or unaltered dogs, new breeding permit, and association application fees. This application fee will also be used to offset the Sheriff's Office background check for each breeding permit applicant. So with this ordinance, we need to update the master schedule of fees, so I'll just go real quick on the fees that will be updated. In section 901A, we will amend the animal licenses to $78 per dog, per year, for unaltered dog license. This is an increase of 100% to the existing annual fee for unaltered dog licenses, aligning Fresno County's rates with those of the regional jurisdictions. This increase was suggested by the board to reduce the number of licensed unaltered animals and have a significant cost difference between altered versus unaltered pets. The licensed cost of spade and neutered pets will remain at $4 for each animal per year. Then we will be adding new section 904A, this is the breeding permit, $2,000 per dog, per dog, per year. Breeding permit establishment of this new annual breeding permit fee crucial for the administration oversight of permitted breeding activities. And then we're also adding section 904B, nonrefundable administrative application fee, $50 per application per dog, and this fee specifically covers the administrative overhead and the mandatory background checks conducted by the Sheriff's Office.
Thank you.
Any questions from board?
Any questions from the board?
Actually, I have one. It's, the fees, I think, are completely in order, but since I have you here and we're talking about just the shelter in general and animals, at our Sunnyside Library, are we doing a cat giveaway program in the next few days that you're aware of?
Let me see, my cat lever over here. Sim, you know cat thing?
I know City of Fresno has been working with our county libraries, at least the metro ones, in order to do cat outreach and, and adoption events. I know I had contacted our county library to get our shelter involved as well, but I can double-check to make sure we're a part of that as well.
Just want to make sure that if we're using county resources, at the very least, it needs to be a joint effort. If we're helping to alleviate just the city of its issue while we're impacted as well, I, I have an issue with that. Not that the city's doing anything wrong, but we need to make sure that we are partly participating in giving our animals away, because we're impacted at our facility. Thank you.
Correct. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Chairman, just, just a quick comment, if you don't mind. I can't let this moment go by without just recognizing the fact, I think this is the last time that David Lukini will be in front of your board as the Director of Public Health. He will be retiring at the beginning of August, and so just want to acknowledge that publicly and thank David for his service. So we'll be preparing for a recruitment for his position, but excited for David for his future, and just wanted to acknowledge that publicly here, since this is officially the last time he's in front of your board in this role.
We don't accept your resignation.
I'll, we volunteer it, I guess, if they...
Was it The Godfather, that's somewhere where, you know, I tried to leave, but they wouldn't?
That's wrong.
That's Al Pacino, come on. Godfather III, I know of that scene.
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much for the kind words, it's...
Alrighty.
It's been, we've dealt with a lot, so.
Well...
Now we've got a good ordinance, license.
Wish you the best, David.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Dave. Is there any public comment on this item? Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the board.
Mr... Go ahead, yeah. I'll, I'll second Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion and a second?
Thank you.
All in favor, so I say an aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
Thank you, board.
Director, thank your staff for all that they did to help put this over the finish line.
Will do.
Did a great job.
We now move to item number 12, under Public Works and Planning, conduct public protest hearing as required by Public Utilities Code Section 6234. For the Board of Supervisors, receive, hear, and pass upon any timely written protests, including any timely written objections made by interested person against the Board granting a franchise up to 25 years on a non-exclusive basis by ordinance to RT Diversified Incorporated upon annual payment of a franchise fee to county to construct, maintain, and use pipes and appliances for transmitting water and wastewater to service of Clovis Unified School District's Terry Bradley Education Center and along the cross upon and under approximately 4.8 miles of the following public streets and highways within an incorporated area of Fresno County from existing city of Fresno Water Main and McKinley Avenue, east of Princeton Avenue, eastward on East McKinley Avenue, and then northward on North Leonard Avenue to Shields Avenue, westward on Shields Avenue to a Shields and Locan terminus where city is in process of installing water and sewer mains, and along streets surrounding Bradley Center of Leonard Walden Highland and Princeton Avenues. After conducting closing public protest hearing, do the following as determined by the Board: A, determine that no timely written protests, including timely written objections, have been made against the Board granting of non-exclusive franchise to RTD, and the Board may proceed to act on recommend Action 3; or B, determine that one or more timely written protests, including timely written objections, have been made against the Board granting of non-exclusive franchise and have been heard by the Board and passed upon such protests, including such objections, as applicable. One, protests including objections are insufficient. Two, protests including objections are overruled or denied. Or three, protests including objections are sufficient. And C, if the Board determines that all such protests, including all such objections, are insufficient or overruled or denied, but the Board may proceed to recommend Action 3. D, if the Board determines that only some of such protests, including some of such objections, are insufficient or overruled or denied, the Board will determine under recommend Action 2. E, if remaining protests, including remaining objections, are sufficient. E, if the Board determines that any such protests, including objections, are sufficient, then the Board may grant such protests, sustain such objections, and abandon these proceedings, and conduct first hearing, including first reading of the ordinance granting non-exclusive franchise as described above to RTD, waiving reading of the ordinance in its entirety, and set second hearing of ordinance for August 5, 2025, and designate County Council to prepare a fair and adequate summary of the proposed ordinance, and direct the clerk of the board to post and publish required summary in accordance with Government Code Section 25124B1.
And Mr. Chairman, this again is another one where we have three members, Supervisors Maxie, Pacheco, and Brettafeld, who are conflicted out, and so we need to, under the rule of necessity, to ensure the board can conduct the business, those three will draw to see which of them will serve, so the board has a minimum quorum.
Yeah. You're out again?
He's out again. Wow, you picked him. Wait, 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 wait. Just look at that, he's good.
Yeah. So you lost.
And Supervisor Pacheco will be the one to sit with the board on this item.
Okay.
Got a motion, Mr.?
No, I gotta read a script, this is a public hearing. You may just go ahead, you, I take that as a presentation.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
I am now opening the public protest hearing for the non-exclusive franchise, which is recommended Action 1, for the Board to receive and hear and pass upon any timely written protests, including any timely written protests, objections made by any interested person against the Board granting the non-exclusive franchise to RT Diversified Inc. as described in staff agenda item. At this time, the Board will hear from members of the public in favor or against the matter. Is there anyone that wants to speak on this? Okay, is there anybody that's present and any written protests? I am now closing the protest hearing. Sorry, I gotta do this. Are there any comments from the board? No. Under recommendation, Action 2, okay. We'll make this following determination, so there's no protests, correct?
That's correct, none of them.
Okay. To, okay, to determine that no timely written protests, including timely written objections, have been made against the Board granting of the non-exclusive franchise to the RT, to RT Diversified, and that the Board may proceed to act on the recommendation 3, which is the first reading of the ordinance.
So you need a motion and a second for that determination.
All right.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion for Action Item 3.
Second. All in favor, signify, say an aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Okay, so we're doing recommend, number 3, correct?
Actually, that motion would have been for the determination.
Then do number 4.
Now you're going to do number 3.
Oh, okay, so we have to do recommendation, number 3.
You did the determination, you needed a motion for the determination, which you have done. And now, I know that Supervisor said recommend Action 3, but it was actually he was doing a motion for the determination. And now you're going to do the recommended Action 3.
Okay.
A motion.
So we're making an action on Action 3, on the positive.
Staff, do you want to clarify?
What about designate County Council to prepare a fair and adequate summary, summary, and direct the clerk of the board to post and publish the required, what about those actions? Do we do them all at once? We got to do it one at a time?
I think you can do them all at once, but I'll lean towards your interim county council for confirmation.
They're having a sidebar here.
Yeah, I see that.
Do you want us to waive the first reading?
I understand, that's what the board needs to do, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to waive the first reading.
Okay, second. All in favor, so I say an aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. So where are we at now, Bernice?
Now you are at...
Not done yet.
Oh, you're not done yet?
No.
Recommended Action 4.
Three motions.
Recommended Action 4 should be... What about 4 and 5? Can we put them together, or you want to do one at a time? I believe you could put them together. It's direct, County Council...
You can do them together.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we accept staff's recommendation for item number 4 and 5, to designate County Council and to direct the clerk to post and publish the required summaries.
You second that? Okay, all in favor, so I say an aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
We good? Thank you.
So we're on item 13.
So now we go to item 13, adopt resolution to fill a senior engineering tech position with extra help, retiree William LaRue, effective July 21, 2025, finding pursuit to government of section 7522.56F1, that 108-day separation period for retired employee returning to employment as extra help is not applicable based on your board's certification that nature of employment and employment is necessary to fill a critically need position before 108-day separation period.
Good morning, Chairman and board supervisors.
You guys want to hear a presentation?
Nah, pretty cut and dry. And the patient, I'm ready to make a motion after the public portion.
Is there any public hearing? No public comment on this item? Hearing none?
I'll move for staff's recommendation.
Second. All in favor, so I say an aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We'll move to 14.
We now move to item number 14. Under Public Works and Planning, consider appeal of planning commission's denial of variance application number 4138, proposing to allow creation of a 2.0-acre parcel and an 18.0-acre parcel from an existing 20-acre parcel in AE20 Zone District. And if your Board desires to grant appeal and overturn planning commission's denial of variance application number 4138, it won't be, it would be appropriate to adopt negative declaration prepared for project based on initial study number 8285.
Yeah. And so on this item, I think we're sitting in a quasi-judicial way, so I just want to note for the record that I did meet with representatives of the appellant of the planning commission's decision, just for the record.
So, so did I. I want to enter that into the record.
And so did I.
Okay.
And I had a phone conversation. I've not met with anyone, but I had a phone conversation.
Yeah. Okay. Nobody likes not to talk to anybody.
All right. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Tawana Matunga, Principal Planner with the Department of Public Works and Planning. This item comes to you on appeal of the planning commission's denial at its February 13, 2025 hearing. The variance proposes to allow the creation of two substandard parcels, a 2-acre parcel and an 18-acre parcel from an existing 20-acre parcel. This concludes my brief presentation, unless you have any questions at this time.
Okay. Questions from the Board?
No.
No questions? Comment?
No.
No, let's, go ahead.
Okay, okay. All right, sorry. I'm not sure what the order is. Call me forward.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
Are, are you the one, uh?
Yes.
Yeah.
Representing the applicant.
Okay.
Oh, gosh. Thank you. Thank you. Sorry.
No, you have nothing to be sorry about.
Well, I, I've been here all morning. Yeah.
Yeah.
I've seen what you guys have.
That's what I'm talking about.
Have gone through. That's what I, um, we appreciate your service very much. Thank you for what you're doing for all of us who live in the county of Fresno. I say good morning on here, but good afternoon, and I'm sorry to speak into your lunch hour, Chairman Mendez and fellow supervisors. Thank you for the opportunity to appear before you regarding this application. We have filed this appeal to address in more detail the four factors affecting this property, as well as added evidence and facts for you to consider. In, in order for you to prove this variance, you need to find the four factors, which I know you're well aware of. And at the conclusion of this presentation, our hope is that you will be able to find just that, all four factors. Appearing before you today in support of this application is myself, Melissa Holtermann, and Michael Carlton, and his family are also here. They are the long-term tenants and hopeful, hopefully, future purchasers of this parcel. The applicants for this variance are second hand, are second-generation Central Valley farmers, all born here and raised in Fresno. These young farmers are working to provide for their families. They do not reside on the property, but have rented this home and shop since they purchased it from the Saveli family. The Saveli family lived on this home for many years and raised their children and farmed this ranch. I know I am absolutely preaching to the choir when I say farming is very expensive. Here, the previous owners, the Savelis, were unable to make the farm, this farming farm and its farming profitable for themselves or their family, and ultimately had to sell this ranch. The cost for the current owners of the farm and, which are productive apricots and peaches, is an average of $12,500 per acre. Even stone fruit, being in high demand and expensive, as we all know when we go to the grocery store, they have not yet to make a profit. Here, the farmers are extremely, in extreme need for funding for those stone fruit crops, and the tenants on the property are in need of home ownership for his ag business and family. Government Code, Section 65906, variances shall be granted only because of special circumstances applicable to the property, including size, shape, topography, location, and surroundings. The strict application of a zoning ordinance should not deprive property, properties owners their privileges enjoyed by other properties owners in the vicinity and with identical zoning and classification. We will show that there are numerous parcels in the area zoned AE20, substandard size, that have been sold even in the past year. Any variance can be granted, shall be granted, be sub, be, any grant, any variance that is granted shall be governed by conditions assuring that there is no unauthorized use or special privileges. There are no special privileges being granted if this variance is, is awarded. This will only give the property owners the ability to have the local, what other local property owners have, and the rights that, that they would be able to have continuity and sustainability for their ag. In finding number 1, for you, for us to make this justification for, for the AE20 exclusive ag minimal parcel size zoning under the general plan, we must demonstrate exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions that are unique to this property. We have the following four special factors that are legally accepted exceptions and extraordinary circumstances for you to consider. One is the pre-existing development and site conditions. There is a subs, there are substantial existing development, concrete pads, buildings, and, and a gravel yard that render this 2-acre parcel unsuitable for agriculture, making the AE20 requirements impracticable. Here, the parcel is non-productive ag use. It is concrete gravel buildings and would, and would be cost prohibitive to put back into trees or irrigation. The home and the property have its own septic domestic well, and it's self-sustaining for decades. This property has been developed and divided by the road before the current zoning regulations were enacted and does not, and does not conform to current standards. This 2-acre partial of the 20-acre parcel is entirely paved and used as storage and structures. This pre-existing development status and current site condition is an acceptable circumstance that can be considered. Number 2 is the development patterns. Number 1, the pattern of previously approved of similar variances. 2, the existence of non-conforming parcels nearby to the, to this precedent. And 3, the strict, indicating that the strict zoning enforcement is inconsistent with the actual use of this particular land. I would like, with your permission, to present, to use the Elmo, if I could, and then also give you what I, what has been run in relationship to this property. I don't know if it's okay to handle.
No, I don't. You know what? Let, let me, let me help you out on this. Can you come, come back to us a minute?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, let me, let me do this. Number 1, this is in my district, so I want to give more of a statement than anything. Number 1, first and foremost, you should have reached out to me first, because it's in my district, and that didn't happen. So I want to tell you that offends me a little bit, and I want to be upfront with you on that. Okay? Number 2, generally, from the planning commission to now, I generally don't talk to people, because when Buddy and I were first elected, we did that, and then people want to sue us. So I kind of, kind of avoid that. But nonetheless, it, it should have been reached out. In my opinion, this is in my district, the rule has been set since 1970. And the reason is, is because Buddy and I are the two farmers. So when you say that, you're preaching to the choir here. I get that. It's set up so that we don't have smaller parcels in 20 being parceled off, so that we don't have a bunch of homes throughout the, the county and the country, because what happens is people from the city move out, and they want the country life without the cultural practices that go along with it. So when we run our tractors at 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning, or we gotta spray and all that, it's all great until the people from the city move out. So this was made since 1970 to preserve farmland and not do this. There are exceptions to the rules. The exceptions are, is when it is a family transfer. That is generally the only one that that happens to. The ones that you were going to reference and all that, that happened way prior. I can tell you, since Supervisor Minas, I've been on this board for 10 years, we have had no parcel splits, other than family transfers, with one exception. So you failed to meet 3 of the 4 requirements, and we'll have a very tough time in doing that. Staff recommended against that. The planning commission on a 5-1 vote recommended against that. Your only course are the 5 members of this Board to go against that, because we have discretion that we have the letter of the law and we have the intent of the law. So I'm going to save you a lot of trouble and headache. I believe you'll have difficulty in meeting those. However, while the person trying to buy the application is not a direct blood relative, he is a second-generation farmer, which was the intent of the law to preserve farm ownership and farm housing. So because of that, I'm going to save us all the discussion and going through all that, and I will make a motion that we consider the appeal and grant the request of a 2.0-acre parcel. And if you ever represent anyone again, I would highly recommend you reach out to that office first, and before you go, to my colleagues.
I'll second the motion.
Okay? And that's it. We're done.
Okay.
Second.
Is there any other public comment?
I, I don't know if you want to hear.
We don't need to.
No, we don't need to. All in favor, so I say an aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
I, I will apologize. I was standing in front of you with Bernice when I was filing the appeal, and I talked to you, and you said that you would refuse to meet with me and to discuss this particular variance application or appeal. So that was the reason why that was addressed. And then also that I did talk to speak with the actual individuals that are going to be the homeowners of this particular parcel, and he knew you and reached out to you. So.
Yep. He did.
That was the basis. I absolutely went to you first and, and was told that, but I apologize.
No worries.
That was not reiterated again, and I appreciate the Board, and what matters most is that this family is able to.
They are, they are.
We now move to item number 15. Under Board of Supervisors.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I just want to clarify. So I think the motion was to adopt Staff's recommendation, correct?
No, I, no.
No. It was to, uh.
Approved.
To approve the.
The variance. Okay. So, so that would be all, all of the items, 1, 2?
1, 2, 3, and 4.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm on second.
Yep.
Yeah, sometimes your job is to start, stop the train temporarily.
Yeah.
We now move to item number 15. Board of Supervisors, comments and reports.
Okay. Who wants to go first? Go ahead.
So I got a couple of items, and I, I think some of us are gonna comment on some of the things I'm gonna say. But I'm gonna start off with rooster ordinance, which kind of sounds strange. But I've had a conversation with the sheriff, and the sheriff has indicated that an ordinance may be necessary to kind of deal with number of roosters on people's properties. We have some properties throughout Fresno County where there are in excess of 100 roosters. And I've talked to the Ag Commissioner's Office, talked to Buddy a little bit about this too. So Buddy and I are gonna work together with the Sheriff's Office to bring back to this Board in a couple of months an ordinance that will limit the number of roosters allowed on, in, on Fresno County properties. Next item I want to talk about is, on Thursday, I'll be flying out to attend the NACO conference. NACO is National Association of Counties. I'm on the Board of Directors of that organization, and also will be Chairman at, for the Finance, Pensions, and Intergovernmental Affairs Committee at, at that meeting. And I have 2 resolutions that have been put together. One resolution deals with calling on Congress to pass a budget in a timely fashion, because it impacts all counties. All 3,069 counties rely on the federal government to pass an appropriations bill so we can set our budgets appropriately in a timely fashion. The second resolution is calling on NACO to lobby Washington on comprehensive immigration reform. And in the resolution itself, it doesn't lay out specifically directions that need to be taken, but it does recognize the fact that there are millions of people who are living in the United States who are undocumented. And over the course of the last 50 years, you've had different administrations who have chosen to apply the law or not apply the law, and it's created a tremendous amount of confusion for a lot of folks. The resolution itself points out to the agricultural industry. It talks a little bit about the construction industry. It talks about the hotel industry, restaurant industry, and how many of individuals are here contributing to our economy, yet they're kind of being left in limbo right now. So Congress really needs to act. So that's the second resolution that will be presented at NACO. I wanted to talk a little bit about my friend who passed, John Harris, and I know he was, uh, everyone up here had a relationship with John, and really appreciated all the, all the work that he gave to Fresno County, not only agriculture, but also just horse racing. I will, I will definitely miss him, and I would like to bring a memorial resolution back, and maybe I could partner with Buddy's office on that, because I know he had properties on the east side of the county in my district and west side of the county as well, in, in Buddy's district. So that'll come back at our next meeting. And appreciate all of you. That's all I have.
Luis, you have anything? Okay. You're good?
Nothing.
Okay. I just got, you know, I just want to echo what he said about John Harris. To me, it was very personable. John Harris had, and his parents had contact with several members of our family over the years. His mother was my aunt's godmother. So it was real personal to me. You know, we have mutual relatives, so he always used to joke to me that I was his cousin. But, no, I mean, a, a great man. A lot of people just don't, I don't think they know exactly the plant, philanthropy he did. I mean, he was very kind, did a lot for a lot of people. The other thing I want to talk about is a little bit about Measure C. My colleague did me a big favor, went to the COG meeting, the last one we had, and there, before that, the COG had, I don't think they, I don't know what kind of powers they gave the Chair and Vice Chair of COG. But I'd went to a couple of meetings in, in June that they were supposed to be facilitation meetings with Transportation for All and commu, with Ashley's group, yeah, and Community Foundation. So anyway, I, I want to distance myself from, I mean, there was a report back to COG that there was total agreement, which there was not. And I just want to distance the Transportation Authority, which I chair, from these facilitation meetings that are going on right now. They're still going on. I, I feel that it's a, it's a violation of the Brown Act. This facilitation team meet, uh, group needs to be, should have been a standing committee. And there's really not in any of their minutes, any hard language that they're even an ad hoc committee in the minutes of COG. So all I'm saying is, the Transportation Authority is not a part of that group and will not be a part of that group. So I just want to make that clear. So anyway, one of the things that, you know, they're, they could be spending Measure C money or directing it, this facilitation group by basically telling the steering committee what they can do and can't do, and setting up the agendas for the steering committee, which I don't think they're off, nobody authorized them to do it. I don't think the COG Board authorized them to do it. And the problem is that we're paying Kendall Flint, that's the, and her, and, and the firm that she represents, over a million dollars before this deal's done. And to have them direct, direct her, I, I think is this, and not be in public meetings, these aren't meetings, they're meetings behind closed doors, is totally unethical and, and, and could be illegal. So I just want to make that statement. So we'll move to item 16.
Item 16. Board Appointments.
Yeah, I have, I don't have any.
Yes, I wanted to appoint Blair Looney to the Fresno Mosquito and Vector Control District. He'll replace Jennifer Estrada in the at-large position.
Go ahead.
So to the In-Home Support Service Advisory Committee, I'd like to appoint Tony Chavez to the vacant at-large seat previously held by Yua Lugo, with the new term expiring 1/4 of 27.
Okay. And Luis, you have none? Okay. So I need, is there any public comment on that, this item? Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the Board for most. Okay.
I'll second that.
Second. Okay. All in favor, so I say an aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
We now move to item number 17. Public Presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons desiring to address the Board on any manner not on this agenda.
Not on the agenda.
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Finas Alexander, and I'm here regarding a claim for damages that I filed on June 27. Back in, in 2024, I was arrested at. Back in 2024, I was arrested at the M Street Courthouse for disrespect of a sheriff's deputy. Since there is no statute for that, I was charged with trespassing. At my preliminary hearing, the judge dismissed the case in the interest of justice, which means obviously there was no crime. I should not have ever been arrested. I spent a day in jail. Therefore, since my constitutional rights were affected, I filed this claim. I'm now being told that the claim was filed too late. I'd like to read a paragraph from your claim for damages form. It says, note, claims for bodily injury, I'm not, haven't been hurt, or death. Last I checked, I'm still alive. Damage to personal property, not part of my case, or damage to growing of crops, I'm not a farmer, must be filed not later than six months after the occurrence out of which the claim or claims arose. All other claims, which I think is where my case sits, must be filed not later than one year after the occurrence, out of which the claim or claims arose. So it seems that I did not file my claim late, but since nothing is going to happen until I get from this Board or present a motion to file a late claim, then that's what I'm here to do.
Okay, thank you.
So I make that motion now.
Well, we can't act on, this isn't an action item.
Okay. I'm still waiting for the next step.
Yeah, I don't...
County Council, yeah. You need to submit that in writing to the risk manager, or actually to the clerk of the Board.
That I tried to do, they said there is no form for that.
An application to submit a late claim, you're correct, there is no form for that. You would just write it down why you are justified in filing a late claim.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you for coming. Okay, anybody else?
You may take public comment for closed session at this time? Oh, I apologize, I didn't.
Waste three minutes? I think the last thing on your agenda is what I kind of wanted to comment on, but I'm not too sure. And I don't want to like skip this and not be able to say what I want to say.
You would be commenting on something that's not on this agenda? That's what this time is.
Yeah, that's the thing, I don't know whether it has to do with it or not.
What is it, real quick?
I guess it might have something to do with it, but I don't know.
Okay, okay, thank you very much.
At this time, you could take...
Is there any comment on closed session? Hearing none, I'll turn it over to County Council.
And we do not anticipate having anything to report out to Board Manager in following closed session.
So moved.
Made a motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor, say an aye?
Aye.